Almost.
Yeah.
All right, all set? Okay, good evening, everyone. Tonight we have a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. It is Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022. The time is now 5 o'clock. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the open public meetings law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the Press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council and posted on the Cape May City website and Cape May City Hall Bulletin Board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio recorded and video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. The City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Malick?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Here.
Councilmember Yeager?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillensworth?
Here.
City Manager Val?
Here.
Deputy City Clerk Dillon?
Here.
And we have also Deputy City Manager Lou Glasgow. And Mayor, there's one resolution on the special meeting agenda. It's Resolution 130-05-2022, a resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10:4-12. This is for settlement of dispute between the City of Cape May and lower township MUA and the local Stockton Hotel litigation.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Mayor, would you like to hold public portion now?
Yes, anyone wishing to speak publicly? Seeing none, we can close public comment.
Time in the closed session is 5:05.
All right.
This meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the Press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of city council and posted on the Cape May City website and Cape May City Hall Bulletin Board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio recorded and video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. The City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call, Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Mullock?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Here.
Councilmember Yeager?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillen Schwartz?
Here.
City Manager Vahl?
Here.
And Deputy City Clerk Dillon?
Here.
And I believe we have a few additions tonight, Mayor, if you'd like me to go ahead and list those?
Please.
Okay. First, we have Resolution 139-05, 2022. It's a resolution authorizing settlement of a dispute between the City of Cape May and Lower Township Municipal Utilities Authority. If somebody would like to add that motion to add.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
We also have Resolution 140-05, 2022, a resolution for the appointment of a member to the Beach Safety Advisory Committee for the City of Cape May.
Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
Any other additions or deletions tonight, council?
Any additions or deletions? No.
All right. Mayor, first, we have that proclamation for the Knights of Columbus.
Okay. Good evening, gentlemen, if you would join me at the podium. Thank you very much. Thank you. Well, thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's an honor to be here with our Knights of Columbus, and I have a proclamation on behalf of the City of Cape May and all of council. This is a proclamation in support of the fundraising efforts of the Knights of Columbus, St. Mary's Council 6202, whereas the Knights of Columbus organization has earned a national reputation for its dedication and support of people with special needs. And whereas the Knights of Columbus of the state of New Jersey has, in recent years, donated more than $8.5 million for the use and benefit of our citizens with special needs. And whereas during this same period, special needs funding from the state of New Jersey and federal government has declined, and whereas the commensurate needs of the requirements of our neighbors with special needs are increasing rather than diminishing. And whereas the Knights of Columbus, the St. Mary's Council 6202 of Cape May, New Jersey, proposes to call on our fellow citizens to invest and support in charitable endeavors on behalf of those with special needs. Now therefore, I Zachary Mullock, Mayor of the City of Cape May, New Jersey, do recognize Memorial Day weekend, 2022, as a time for fundraising by the Knights of Columbus for the use and the benefit of those with special needs in our area and the state of New Jersey. And be it further resolved, I call upon my citizens of Cape May and visitors to assist as they are willing and able in supporting this charitable effort. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. We got a photo already? Good. Let's take a quick photo. One more.
Why don't you get in front of the podium?
In front of the podium?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And next on the agenda, we have update from our city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're getting ready for summer. Talk about a couple of public safety issues. We've met this week with our police, fire department, EMS, the beach patrol. We've met this week with our police, fire department, EMS, the beach patrol. We're getting ready for the summer. The fire department is going to have an EMT stationed in front of Convention Hall during the summertime, so because of our response right now from West Cape May, so that we have a quicker response from the beachfront throughout our city. And something else we're starting is we're looking for volunteer firefighters. The Fire Chief Alex supports that, and there's a press release going out looking for volunteer firefighters and part-time firefighters. They have to be certified volunteer firemen that have been through the academy to join our fire company. So we support that, and I like the cooperation we're having with the Fire Chief. We're starting a senior citizen program. A lot of seniors in this town would just like something to wake up to during the day and do something, if they want to contribute something to our community. We're going to have a welcome center behind me here in front of the police station, and also the fire museum, which we proudly display, the city owns and has the 1928 La France that the fire department's restored over the years, to kind of be an ambassador to promote and show and the people what we have here. So we're looking for volunteers. Casey's put an advertisement together, it's posted across the street, also at the senior housing across the street. Promenade, video cameras, we've gotten some quotes for video cameras for the traffic, looking down the street, up and down east and west, and the beachfront. We're looking at that proposal, and we're looking at others to try to get that in the near future. Getting estimates of charging stations for our customers that come here this summer that have electric vehicles, we're looking to put some charging stations in. So we're also in the process there, getting the prices and where we're going to exactly put it. Once I have the prices, I'll bring it before council to make a decision where you want to put these charging stations. The code enforcement has requested the last meeting and now working on the weekends, and going around on Saturday mornings also checking on people that are not complying with permits. So as requested, that's being done. The Ocean Avenue Conference Station over here is being renovated by our own Public Works employees. It's going to complement, just like the other buildings right there, the coffee shop and the others right there, it's going to all look the same, and we're very, I'm very pleased, the council should be pleased, we have such talented people in Public Works that can do that work. We don't have to farm it out, we can get it done, and we're going to have that done before Memorial Day weekend.
Wow.
We're being prepared for this weekend, the Coast Guard having their festival, we're supplying some EMTs, we're supplying extra police support and helping them with every trash cleanup they need. They expect anywhere from 5,000 to 10,000 people. We're also going to have a run that morning that you're familiar with, we do every year on Mother's Day weekend. I'm working with a nice firefighter named David Jackson, one of our fire employees here, fireman employees, working with AED grant. It's always been a desire to put an AED grant, God forbid somebody's having a heart issue, say in the center of the mall, we want to put one, so there's access and proper signage, where if people's in trouble, they know where to find it, and also down at the Cove. And we're getting a grant to implement the one down at the Cove, so that's forthcoming. We're cleaning the beach up, Public Works doing a job, good job raking, cleaning it up, picking up trash, and getting everything ready for this season. It's about the highlights, Mayor, but we're getting ready, and I can see that we're going to have another successful season, and we'll continue to provide a good, clean community and a good, safe community. Thank you.
Thank you. And City Solicitor, any updates?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
No? Okay. Looks like we are on to an award presentation. Want to join us here at the desk, please? No?
Unless you would like to address ordinance 464.
Okay. Yeah, we'll do that. We're going to do, council, do you mind if we go out of order on ordinance 464?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. I see we have a special guest with us this evening in the audience. I think they, he was basically coaxed to be here because they told him there was a problem at the firehouse, and he got right on the wheels and got over here. But I'm going to read this next ordinance. This is ordinance 464, 2022. This is an ordinance naming an undesignated public right-of-way between Lafayette and Washington Streets. Whereas the City of Cape May, Cape May City Council wishes to name said unnamed public right-of-way, Whister's Way, in honor of Whister Barney Doherty. And whereas Mr. Doherty was born Christmas Day, 1932, on the second floor of Roth's Candy Store, now the office of Cape May Magazine, above the Fudge Kitchen on the Washington Street Mall. And whereas at age 22, Mr. Doherty and his wife moved into the second-floor apartment above Dell's 5 and 10, and ultimately settled with their four daughters at their home they built on Idaho Avenue. And whereas Mr. Doherty most notably served as a member of the Cape May City Volunteer Fire Department for over 60 years, and whereas Mr. Doherty most notably served as the Cape May City Fire Chief for over 25 years as a volunteer. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the City of Cape May, Section 1 is in recognition of his longstanding service to the City of Cape May and its community, the public right-of-way detailed above henceforth will be named Whister's Way in honor of Whister Barney Doherty. Thank you, Mr. Doherty.
I am, I'm going to blame it on old age. I got a dry mouth, and normally, I'm not lost for words, but I'm kind of taken, I'm taken on this, and what a hell of an honor, I'll tell you the truth, and I love all of you. Thank you very much, and it's amazing, it's amazing. I just don't know what to say, but other words are a real big thanks. And as Gomer Pyle says, "Thank you, thank you, thank you," and from the bottom of my heart, I thank you, each and every one of you. So, you know, it's, I just, I, Mike says, you know, he looks at you, he said, "You look good." I say, "Well, I, you know, I don't know what the hell is going on here," and I see my, my family here, I would have, I would have dressed a little better than I am right now, you know, these, well, anyway, I was told if there was anything to say, keep it to five minutes. I'm five-minute Barney, so it's, thank you very much.
Thank you, Barney.
And I take this home, can I?
Yeah. Yeah. If anyone from the family wants to say a few words, it'd be welcome, just join us at the microphone up here.
I'll keep it real quick as well. I want to thank the mayor, council, city manager, Vole. Several months ago, I was in city manager's Vole's office, and we discussed how Cape May does a great job of acknowledging the people and their contributions to the town, and unfortunately, it's usually done when it's too late for the recipient to be, to get the gratitude that they deserve. So I want to thank Mr. Vole for that. I had spoken to the manager of Belasco, and we found this street, which is appropriately enough, right next to the office parking lot. It's been an unnamed street for a while, so it was common sense to do so. And two more appropriate things. First of all, you know, Whister's Way is appropriate because anybody that's had a long and productive conversation with my grandfather will know that by the end of the conversation, it's still going to be Whister's Way, no matter what you told them. And second of all, like most conversations with him, it is a very, very short length that sometimes takes a very, very long time to get to what ends up being a dead end. So, again, I want to thank the city, I want to thank the mayor, city manager, council, and for putting this together, and I want to thank my grandfather for coming without knowing why he was going to be here, so thank you.
Barney, from the police department's end and public safety's end, you've been a state bullish community for many, many years. When I first started 27 years ago as a police officer, you greeted me, I think you were the Fire Chief, or Jay was the Fire Chief at some point, but you were still very heavily involved. My entry into the fire department in Town Bank and West Cape May was guided by older gentlemen like yourself, where that was always something to look up for, up to, and your caliber of man is long forgotten in this community sometimes, but I think you're a very excellent man, and I think you've done a great job for the City of Cape May along your way, and your family's here to demonstrate that. So thank you again from our side of the house.
Well, thank you. And let's all say a prayer that this project of our own, I guess, should get underway soon.
I'm sure Barney, it will. Thank you, Barney.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Yeah. I just want to say quickly, too, about Barney, not only did you serve as a firefighter for 60 years, as a volunteer chief for 25 years, even up until just last year, you're still serving on, at this table for the Firehouse Task Force, and I have to say, your knowledge of everything in regards to the firehouse, you knew everything, and when you, I had to double-check every time you asked me a question, I'd had to go through the paperwork, and you'd usually already have the answer, just kind of testing me, but you're sharp as a tack, and your service to the community still continues today, so I just want to point that out and say thank you again, Barney. Thank you.
Council, would you like to go ahead and introduce this ordinance, motion to introduce?
Oh, we still have to pass this, don't we? Okay. Do we, yeah, this actually.
Just trying to make it official.
Do I have a motion to introduce?
Can I move that second? Thank you.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Mulock?
Yes.
Wonderful.
Thank you again, Barney.
I appreciate you, but I haven't had a dinner.
Yeah. Please.
You're a weeb, Barney.
Have a great dinner, everybody. Have a nice night. Thank you.
And Mayor, if you would like to continue with the award presentation.
Yeah, Barney.
Well, thank you very much. All your service, thank you.
Well, I think it's actually a really good segue into the community that we live in, and talk about a, an award to recognize that. So thank you so much for being here. Take it away. Oh, if you would turn on the microphone, just that little button right there. Thank you so much.
And you can pick them up.
There you go.
They move.
Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. I'm Hunter Holbert. I'm the editor of Jersey's Best Magazine, and I'm here to keep the positive vibes rolling. I'm here for a very special reason, and that reason is to officially congratulate you guys in the City of Cape May on winning the inaugural destination of the year for 2022. I know this may be snoozetown, another award in a whole laundry list of awards that Cape May has won over the decades, but this is truly different. This isn't a popularity contest, this isn't a fan vote, it's not a contest at all. It's a designation that came from months and months of research and letting the data tell the story to us. So with that being said, what is Destination of the Year? Here we go. So Destination of the Year is an initiative that we rolled out to forecast what we think is a place people must visit in the state of New Jersey. This is an award that does not exist elsewhere in the state. It is an award meant to excite people to travel throughout the state of New Jersey and see the amazing destinations people don't expect to find here. So there was a lot taken into consideration when we picked Cape May. The first thing is the Jersey Shore. Knowing what everyone went through in 2020 and the whole resurgence of local travel, the Jersey Shore was for sure the destination to visit, but where along the Jersey Shore should people visit? That was the important question. So we dug into the data, we looked at visitation trends, we looked at historical significance, we looked at the economic vitality and momentum, openings of new businesses, are there new events popping up everywhere? So all of that taken into consideration, what town deserves this designation, and most importantly, what is a year-round destination to visit? And for us, that answer was Cape May. So that being said, we published, after coming to the conclusion that Cape May is the destination of the year, we published in December of last year this announcement in our print magazine, as well as online. We published it far and wide to the tune of over half a million people seeing this announcement in some way, shape, or form, and out of that, strictly on social media, over 20,000 people reacted in some way to this, 99.99999% of which was positive. As you can see, of course, there are grinches, but most people were saying how, just how special this place is to them. It's no secret Cape May is an awesome destination, but for us, the reader reaction really told the story that we already knew and that we wanted to share with the greater public. One of our favorite reactions from many folks we got, believe it or not, is, "I've never been to Cape May, now I have to come this summer." And that's what this initiative is all about, to guide people and show them the places they truly need to visit, and that was the overall goal. So we did a whole bunch of articles, videos, social posts, really spreading the message that Cape May is not just a summer place. We talked about how Cape May is the ideal destination in the dead of winter. That sparked a whole whirlwind of comments saying, "You know what? You're actually right. Look at how much there is to see and do." And that really gave people a different perspective on this seaside town that people always associate with summer, and that's something we wanted to tell, the story of it as being a true year-round destination, and people really, really appreciated that about our approach to this announcement. Moving forward, this is where we want you guys to be involved. We're still pushing. We're still pushing, 2022 is not even halfway over, and so while we've partnered with many local travel and tourism organizations and businesses to spread the message, we want you guys to continue to spread that message as we approach summer, Cape May's most popular season, and we really want you guys to help us spread this message far and wide. We brought a bunch of magazines with us that you guys can distribute in any way you like.
Perfect.
And telling the story of why Cape May is truly a destination unto itself, and a world unto itself in the state of New Jersey. So we're really excited to keep the momentum going. This is a job well done to you guys. It's a legacy that continues to live on, and this is an award that speaks to the continued success of a great city and town that is Cape May. So congratulations.
That's great. Thank you so very much. I think, I think I speak for all of us when I say, "We agree," so.
And you're a homeboy.
No, thank, thank you very much, and we do, I know, thank all of our businesses and community members who helped contribute to that, so thank you very much, and this is quite an honor, so thank you.
Yeah. All right, so we're going to finish by handing you this.
Okay.
We have a goodie bag for you guys.
Okay. Good bag. Oh, yeah, we've got it all. Thank you so much. Congratulations. You're brilliant. Two or three shots. You're good? Good? Great. And put them on. And we go. Good? Yeah? Good? And last one. Here we go. Very easy. Okay. Thank you so much.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Say it again. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you for the honor.
Thank you.
And also with us is Casey from Convention Hall, and Casey, thank you to you and your entire staff for all your hard work to help contribute to this, so thank you very much.
Okay. I just feel like, you know, I'm overwhelmed by what, all the great things you said, and I feel like I'm, we just won the Oscar.
know you have a copy of a sample.
Yes, we have a, I'll just start off briefly. The solicitor will certainly help out with this discussion. But just so everybody understands, the whole intent of this harbor master is what our solicitor would call Harbor Master Light. We, of course, have an issue in the harbor. Coincidentally, I assume a lot of people have seen the article, I think it was last week, in Atlantic City Press. It was after I received a copy of this proposed ordinance that, that article pointed out that the state has a problem with abandoned boats. And of course, that at one point in time, Cape May's harbor had as many as seven abandoned boats that it had to deal with. So, our proposal here is really to try to, now, we're, I think though, a lot of that has been cleaned up. We still have a boat that's a little bit suspicious out there. But the whole point of this is to actually appoint a, an individual, which would, it would be a volunteer position where, and it would be just an administrative communication type of position, an individual that would, would be eyes and ears for the agencies that really should and can address the issue of boats that are out there. You know, the whole point is to be, let's be sure that we prevent a situation where we have a boat that can sink because a sunk boat in the harbor is a navigation hazard. It's obviously a safety hazard. It's an environmental hazard. So, it's the kind of thing we'd like to employ. We think this position is the perfect position to do that. Again, it would be a person who would handle communications with the appropriate, with the city manager, with code enforcement. And if, you know, if we see fit, have them communicate with state police, et cetera. I was rather surprised that in that article, it said that the agency responsible for abandoned boats and addressing the abandoned boats is the New Jersey DMV, which I don't think has a marine division out there. But so, again, we're proposing that we have this so we can prevent issues in the future from occurring. And against a volunteer position, interviewed by individuals in the, in the city, of course, picking the right person that would do well on this job. So, Chris, you.
I can just piggyback off of that. It was a great summary of, of, I think, you know, what you and I had talked about, Mike, over the weekend, to try and, to look at the spectrum of the way that this position is viewed across the state. And, you know, there is the, ranges from the honorary harbor master, and here's your plaque, and put it over your fireplace, and don't ever show up to City Hall. And then, there's full baywatch, where you get the boat and the badge, and 65K a year, whatever it is. But what we talked about is starting light. And what is before counsel potentially is probably one tick above honorary. You're still leaving enforcement to the appropriate officials, code enforcement, the police department, state police, the marine services bureau, and, and really recognizing that it may be helpful to have another set of eyes and ears. If there's a seafaring person that would volunteer, this is a volunteer position, not paid, not showing up nine to five. And I would liken it to the relationship between a member of the HPC and the HPC compliance officer. So, that you have someone with expertise in that particular area, in this case, boating, in that case, HPC. And, but we don't send our HPC members out into the field to check on properties and that type of thing. And if they do it, they're on their own. But if they see something, they can say something, and they can report it to the HPC compliance officer. So, similar to that, this, the, the powers and duties are very limited, and it's essentially desk duty. So, that you're providing consultative support to the city in connection with code enforcement and city manager's office. The actual employees recommend the adoption and promulgation of rules relevant to the issues of boating, navigation, and abandoned vessels. Provide consultative support for investigations and recommendations for potential enforcement action. And subject to the approval of the city manager in coordination with the code enforcement officer, the harbor master may communicate with an owner, an operator of a transient vessel, or local long-term anchored or moored vessel on behalf of the city. And it's going to be limited to, I think, recognizing that code enforcement can't be everywhere all the time. If someone is, like I said, a seafaring person, you know, they may be another set of eyes. On a volunteer basis and can make a phone call, if they see something, they can say something, and then report it to the appropriate authorities who will handle it accordingly. So, I saw this as sort of a low-risk, you know, opportunity to invite a member on a volunteer basis to assist with, you know, the harbor.
I just have a, I have a question, and I brought this up to you before the meeting. My concern is liability on the city, on the actions taken by this person, and how the city could be liable for any actions taken. And I think you assured me that it was just one tick up, so that they're not, you don't have a badge, and they don't have, you know, authority, that they're looking for the police, or the marine police, or the coast guard to enforce certain things, and it's not up to them to take that action on themselves.
Right. And that's the logic behind limiting the duties and one tick up, which is really, you know, we're not going to be asking this volunteer to be patrolling the seas for us. But, you know, they, it's a volunteer position. So, if they happen to be out there and they say so, and they make a phone call, well, then, they can make a phone call in the capacity as a harbor master. But we're not, we're not setting duties to patrol the waters, and we're not sending them out there with a city-issued boat or anything like that. This is consultative in, in support of the code enforcement officer.
Yeah. Because that was my concern, that we're going to give somebody a badge and a, you know, and have them go to, go to town on the harbor, you know.
Right.
And get it in place, you know. My other thing that I wanted to point out is that this position is appointed by council.
Correct. And, and broad, you may appoint a harbor master. You, this establishes the ability to appoint a harbor master and provides, you know, what they may do. But you may not appoint a harbor master if you want. We've been, we haven't had one ever. So, but if you do, you know, you can take all those relevant, you know, considerations in, in your deliberation of whether you do that and who you do it. And you can solicit people that are interested on a volunteer basis. And you can evaluate it, you know, based on whatever rational basis you want to use.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, counsel? Okay, so, this may be, go ahead.
I do want, because there, there's nothing in here about qualifications. I mean, are we looking for specific qualifications for this harbor master?
It does say at the bottom of the page when it says, "Experience in boating."
Yeah. Because it's kind of like a constable, if I'm not mistaken?
It's, it's really, it can be whatever council wants to make it. And I did put that council may appoint the harbor master based on all of relevant factors, including, but not limit to, limited to, experience in boating, education, inter-agency coordination, and communication stills. Of course, any other relevant factors that council, positive, negative experience.
So, so, so all of the qualifications would come to us, and then we would then appoint this person? Okay. And kind of piggybacking on what Deputy Mayor Sheehan said, the insurance or the liability that we have, have we contacted our insurance company to, to discuss this at all?
So, they're volunteer basis.
They're covered under the umbrella.
Well, we're, we're not, we're limiting the duties to, to really the bare minimum. So, I consider this position, to the extent you establish it, as akin to a HPC member or a member of the planning board. We're not sending you out into the field to drive around in a city vehicle or anything like that. It's not an employee. And volunteers are not covered under workers' comp. There are exceptions to that, when you, you know, volunteer firemen and, and, you know, public safety type exceptions. But this is not one of those exceptions. And that's precisely why the duties are so limited, is to, to keep it on the volunteer side of things.
But they are.
They're able to, yeah. I'm sorry.
That's right.
They're able to, they're able to go and approach the, the vessel owners, things like that, as part of that.
No, not necessarily. We're, it's, it's, this is kind of a see-something, if you see something, say something, position, with the logic being that this, whoever this volunteer may be, is probably somebody with a boat, and is probably going to have a better vantage point of that harbor than the code enforcement officer, who should be driving around on land. So.
That, so does, because a lot of times with HPC zoning and planning, JIF is still, represents members of that, of those boards. Would they, they also, would they be representing this person also? And I think that's what Mrs. Baldwin's comment is. Have we talked to JIF? Because they would be taking on certain liability, I would think, just being a member of a volunteer group.
The way I see it, Deputy Mayor, is that if someone just calls, says, "I just seen a car accident," at first and second, that's all. There's no liability involved there. They're not going to be, have one of our vehicles, boat, not going to be sworn in. They're just a volunteer.
Well, I, I agree with you. That's our intent. But my concern is, if the person goes beyond what is our intent.
Well.
Are we going to be covered by JIF? Or do we have to contact JIF about this?
Then, then they're acting outside of the authority that you would have given them, and they're outside of the umbrella. The umbrella is limited. It's the, and, and like, the things that they might be involved with are probably, under this code, should be like paper cuts. You know, they, and.
Down at the boat.
Yeah, the, it's, we're, we're not sending, this is not stormtrooper harbor master. This is somebody, and I don't mean that to be facetious, but it's, I think it's important to draw that distinction, because there are other towns where you have someone out there with sirens and a boat and a badge. This is not that. There are other towns, like I said, with the plaque and the honorary. And we're just one tick above that, which is, you may be making a phone call to the actual enforcement person who is employed by the city, covered by workers' comp, you know, all those other circumstances where we would potentially be liable for an employee. This is a volunteer.
Right. But I guess my concern is, when you say, "May be assigned to approach a vehicle, a boat, or a thing."
Well, no. If you take a look at C3, the second paragraph midway through, it says, "The harbor master may communicate with an owner, an operator of transient vessels, or local long-term anchored or moored vessels on behalf of the city."
Right.
I'm a little concerned when we, when we start to approach that area. And I thought I read it. That's why I mentioned it.
So, when, when I drafted that, the intent of that is if communication such as like, we, we have the identity and an address associated with an abandoned vessel, if you run the numbers, and then you make a phone call or write a letter to that person, it could be the code enforcement officer or the harbor master. But not going out there and climbing on a boat or something like that. It's, it's, it's more the, because part of the process of enforcing the abandoned vessels is communicate, finding out, you know, if there's a number, registration number, tracking that with who's responsible, contacting that person, giving them time to deal with their abandoned vessel. And then, there's other things that can be done after that. But that's kind of the, the thrust of that provision.
Right. I just think if you're saying that they may approach it, then to me, that should be talking to JIF about covering it liability-wise. Because you don't know if the person's going to say, "They're harassing me," you know, and then they file a lawsuit for something like that.
Again, this is not sending people out into the field to go, you know.
I understand that.
It's, it's, it's not for that. It is, that, at, at best, they may be writing a letter, or sending an email, or communicating in some way, you know, after consultation with the city manager's office and code enforcement. But that letter can easily just come from code enforcement, as it has in the past.
Right. I just didn't know if, if it's still an idea to, to approach JIF and get, I mean, they would say it's fine, and I'd be good with that. I just want to know, why aren't we actually asking them if this is okay?
The, the answer is, sure. The, the background of this, though, is that the, the duties are so limited that it's, it's really like, the liability is so miniscule. Because, one, they're a volunteer, and two, their duties are, they're limited to that of a planning board or an HPC member, consult to the actual employees that are giving effect to the city's policies.
Okay.
Should we add that the main function really is to just observe and report?
Yeah. I don't like the idea that they're able to approach vessel owners.
We can, we can simply strike that, too.
Yeah. And I like the idea of this ordinance. I do. I, you know, it's something that we talked about, the police enforcing. I mean, we've talked about, you know, our code enforcement enforcing. And there are issues that are out there in the harbor. There's no doubt.
So, the fact that there's another reading for that, it, it's a good point as to like, somebody might misinterpret that. So, we can either strike it, because I, I agree with you, Councilwoman Baldwin, that there is the potential that you could probably read it that way. It definitely was not the intent, but it could easily be removed or, and I think you still maintain the, the intent of it, too. If we just strict, if you were to strike that.
Everybody kind of agree with that? Is that okay?
Yes.
Strike that language? Okay. And then, what I would just suggest is, this isn't even on for introduction.
Oh, yeah.
Any questions or comments council has? Mike, are you okay with kind of heading this?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, I'll have, any questions or comments from council? Get in touch with Mike and obviously Chris Gillen-Schwarz to, to change this for the next council meeting? Is that good?
Mm-hmm.
Good?
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. Perfect.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. And then, it looks like we have the study and recommendation for design and funding of a citywide transportation system.
Okay. I'm going to give a little bit of introduction on this. I sent everybody a proposed resolution for everybody to take a look at, give your comments, and that maybe the next council meeting, we can put it on for, for adoption. This has to do with, and this is a recommendation from MTRAC, to basically encompass what transportation, for the, what we're looking for, for our transportation system in the city. What are, would be the routes? If we had to plan a, a transportation system, what would it be? What the stops would be? Where would it go? How many do you think you would have in order to, for this to be successful? And at this time, I want to ask Mr. Crowley to step up and give us a little bit of background on the theory behind this proposal, using the parking committee as a person, as the group to look at this transportation system, because of the fact, if anybody's aware of, the parking committee is the ones that thought that the, of the jitney system, and that the jitney system should be put in place. And they had some input on the stops that were done for the jitney when it first got enacted. Which is why we were thinking that they should be the committee to look into this. Because they do have the idea of where the parking committee had looked at where parking should be. They had the idea of, on both sides of Beach Drive, the far ends, where there's less parking at nighttime, to open them up to free parking, and then have that jitney shuttle them in. So, they have, I feel, an all-encompassing understanding of the, of the thought process that went into having a jitney even put on, council's perspective, or, you know, in the, in the beginning.
Thanks. I won't be long. Just a couple of brief comments about it. This hall proposed resolution actually came out of a discussion we were having about revenues, and how we can actively and adequately support the things like the shuttle service. We, our, our conversation evolved more toward what we need as a, as a park, as a transportation system in the city. Because for the last 50 years, the town has always said, every planning body and every planning report said that of all the problems, Cape May probably has the most problem with parking.
This whole proposed resolution actually came out of a discussion we were having about revenues and how we can actively and adequately support the things like the shuttle service. We, our conversation evolved more toward what we need as a park, as a transportation system in the city. Because for the last 50 years, the town has always said, every planning body and every planning report said that of all the problems, Cape May probably has the most problem with parking. And the good news here with the presentation just a little while ago, looks like we're going to need more parking because we're going to be getting a lot more people this summer. So anyway, so we thought it would be a good idea to do a couple of things because we didn't want to rush into anything. I think the council's position in this issue is probably clear that as a policymaking body, let's look forward, I think, to what Cape May is going to be for the next 10 years, especially as a year-round resort, to see whether or not we can, as a, as a city, come up with a proposal that really does comprehensively address the needs of transportation around the city, including the use of electric vehicles, including the use of maybe senior citizen shuttles, but, but, but more importantly, and not, not more importantly, but all year round. We've looked at the last couple of years of the jitney service, and that was a, several councils have suggested we do that, and it becomes limited by whatever transitory revenues are available in any given year. And the service really is tailored to the money. We thought it would be a better approach, a longer range approach, a more comprehensive one, to instead of tailoring the service to the available dollars, maybe be able to think about tailoring the dollars to the necessary services. And it's a perfect time, we think, to, to bring in several of your advisory committees, which have helped you over the years, and namely the parking committee, because their, their mission is to really find out how we can resolve the parking problems of the city. Most of the other recommendations and ideas over the years have been impractical politically, logistically, but the one that keeps, seems to be floating to the top is the shuttle and the service, moving people around town to the places where we can park them. We also thought a little bit about maybe expanding the look in that area to consider arrangements with other towns who have more land and might be able, willing to run, run some parking operations close to Cape May, and if we run the shuttles that we have through those parking areas, that's, that's the kind of thing we're spitballing at. But the point is, I, we think it's probably the best way to address this long-term need by the council, activating the parking advisory committee and ask them to take a look at all the towns that have these kinds of things, the towns like us, who have been doing these kinds of things for quite some time, to find out what they do, find out what Cape May needs, and find out how much it would cost, and then activate the MTRAC committee to find out where we can get revenues to support that. So we want, we actually want to put program before dollars because we think putting dollars before programs gives us, doesn't give us the ability to think more than next year's budget. So we would recommend that. And the other thing, too, about making it a resolution, probably important because it's a firm, we think, a firm policy statement by the council, that this is a problem for us, and this may be a good way to fix it. Going forward, you're upfront in public, that you've identified this issue, and you're willing to try something that we may have not done before, and it might actually work over the next five, six years. So that would be our recommendation. We weren't going to present it to you necessarily this way, but it's on the table and we hope you move on it as, as you see fit. So if any questions, you can.
Any questions, council? Good? Okay.
All right. We'll look for it next month.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Dennis. Appreciate it. Okay. On to.
Mayor, next, I'll get it. Oh, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have some ordinances for introduction. We have ordinance 462-2022, an ordinance amending angled parking on Beach Avenue to provide dedicated parking for low-speed vehicles.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
A second. I have a question. Is the county aware of our plan to have vehicles backing up into traffic on our?
Yes, we've, we've been working with Bob Church on that, and he's comfortable with what we're doing, and we're making sure that there's no issue with that. So, yeah.
Yeah, I, I know I had sent you an email on Monday.
And I sent it to you late this afternoon.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't get a response. Because what I was asking for also was, do we have any, you know, it's nice that he's saying this, but is there anything in writing that he's approved this? Because a lot of times, you know, do they want them, they're actually, I think what we're saying here in this ordinance, that they have to back into these spots, correct?
No, they, they believe they pull it. But then they back out, and that was the issue that we have to resolve, and we're resolving that with Mr. Church. But I'll get, as soon as, you know, I'll get something in writing.
Okay, because I think also, being that it's an ordinance, I saw the signs are up already, which really, they shouldn't be up until after we, as a council, approve it and.
Well, we've got the meters there, too, and I guess, but.
Right, but we're actually putting the cart before the horse, it's something that.
You're right. We just want people to be aware that, because what's happening is regular cars were parking there, they were pulling in there and parking. So it's creating an issue, so.
Right. Because I also noticed that the sign.
But it's an awareness thing.
The sign says golf carts, and it should say.
Low-speed vehicles. We could change the sign.
What it says.
And it should also have the ordinance number on there as well.
Well, we don't pass it yet.
All right, we will. Okay. Thank you.
Can I expand? The back-end parking, does that create a hazard?
No, it's your pull-in and your back, just like a regular angled parking, if you did angled parking anyways. So that was one of the questions we had to work out, so it was on a certain angle. I think it only went out 11 feet or something to make sure with the size of the carts, that they didn't create an issue. So.
Okay.
But Bob's working with us, and there's no issues, and he's very comfortable with it, so.
Well, backing out, I think they feel that backing out.
Councilmember Yeager.
Is much more dangerous than.
I'm sorry. They feel that backing out into traffic is a much more dangerous situation than stopping and backing in with a turn signal. So.
So, but I think, okay, I'm a little confused now, because I, I think you just said that they don't want them to back in, they want them to pull in, correct?
That's what I understood, yes.
Because I saw.
Does it say backing in? Okay.
Yeah, we need to change this.
I stand corrected, then.
That's why I was, that's why I was bringing it up.
If we take a look at the name of the street, Beach Avenue, it says back-end parking only. Can we strike that?
Well, that was my clarification. Are you saying that Bob Church wants the golf carts to pull in or back in?
Well, that's the conversation we've had, and we've had a verbal approval. And the only concern he had was the angle when they back out to make sure the rear end, for no better word, isn't, you know, with the traffic coming on, there's enough room. So, I mean, in reality, it's for safety, and the chief can stand behind that, when you come out of a driveway, you're supposed to pull out of a driveway, not back out, because it's creating a problem with driveways. But everybody backs out, because it's just the normal way we do things. And that's the same thing with people parking on angled parking, you back right out and then go forward. And that's, that's the intent, what we have set up there.
So they're going, going to pull in forward?
Yes.
Okay, so then we can strike that from, from this?
Where does it say that they're backing in?
If you, if you take a look at name of street. Between Howard Street and Gurnee Street, at a 60-degree angle, back-end parking only.
Right, and then the new language is that it says the area extending from Gurnee Street to Stockton Place along the ocean side of Beach Avenue shall be reserved for parking of low-speed vehicles only.
So the old language was back-end parking.
Right.
Oh, so there's no strike, but there's no strike through in that?
Yeah, there's no strike.
That's, well, if that, if that's to change, then we can change that. I didn't.
And strike through.
Is it no longer?
No, I think it's both, because on the other side of the street, it is actually back-end parallel parking.
Well, if, the question is, between Howard Street and Gurnee Street at 60-degree angle, is it back-end parking only?
Well, there's parallel parking, and then there's angled parking, because it depends what side of the street you're on.
So that, I'm just, my question is, does that reflect the current condition out there? And if it does, then we don't need to change anything, because the low-speed vehicle parking is just, we're doing low-speed vehicle parking.
Well, I don't think you can say back-end parking only, so we can't say that.
That's what's in there now. That's not new language.
Was there angled parking present before these low-speed vehicle places, spaces were put in?
Well, we had changed the ordinance, so there was no parking besides on, in front of the movie theater.
But that's, I'm wondering if this wording maybe did not change along with that. Like, previously, was there angled parking there?
I believe there was before.
Because this could just be very old language.
There was before the steps went in and the.
I don't think that's in existence anymore. That angled parking.
Should it be between Howard, they're at a 90-degree angle, because it's parallel parking and?
Whatever's there now should be reflected in the code. If it's not, I mean, it's always been angled parking up there in front of the arcade and convention hall, right? That's what we're talking about.
But they were talking, but I'm also talking on both sides of the street, though.
Right, and it's, it's parallel on the south side.
Right, it would be 90 degrees, correct?
I, I don't have a.
Well, I'm, I'm going by the ones below it that say 90. That's why I'm, I'm saying 90.
Yeah, and so maybe we can update that just to make it consistent with what's out there.
Would you consider that parallel parking, 90?
So maybe it's 90-degree angle and, and get rid of back-end parking? Is it?
Why don't Chris and I confer with Bob Church some of these questions you have, and we'll get everything cleared up for you. Sound good, Chris? Mayor?
Is it okay? I mean, I'd like to introduce it just for the, for the metering of the, of the spots.
That's, I'm, as I'm reading these other parking, I'm assuming 90 degrees means parallel parking. So I would think we would have to change between Howard Street and Gurnee Street at a 90-degree angle.
So I have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But let's, let's, let's confer with the county engineer, get all the degrees, whatever degrees they may be, with that county engineer, have it ready for the next meeting. But I'd like to introduce it for parking meter purposes that we have.
Well, I, I think we can address this simply. We, we don't need, we're not required to put the degree in there. So what we have out there on the ocean side is angled parking.
Right.
And it's not back in. It's just pull in, right?
It should be pull in.
Right, so what we can do is, between Howard Street and Gurnee Street, we can say at an angle, and get rid of back-end parking only, which is accurate. And if we want to add a degree or get more specific later, we can do that, but at least it addresses the existing condition. We add the low-speed vehicle, and we can just move on.
Okay. Could you make a?
Someone can turn that into a motion if you'd like.
I think we just wanted to strike back-end parking only. And change.
That works, too.
90-degree angle, and put the 90-degree angle, because that's on the other side of the street. And then on the ocean side is the low-speed vehicle parking.
I'm just looking at, just looking at what we're looking at, it just says sides, ocean side, ocean side.
Yeah.
So both ocean sides should be angled parking.
I'm sorry, I didn't see, I wasn't going all the way over to the ocean side. Yep.
So, and we can just get rid of back-in only, and then that addresses, I think, the concern?
Yes.
Is that?
That's, that's exactly it.
So in both Beach Avenue, first line, Beach Avenue, second line, just get rid of the back-in only language.
Yes.
And then you can, someone can make that motion to amend.
So moved.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes. Do I have a motion on the amended ordinance? Excuse me, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion on the amended ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
All right, next up, we have ordinance 463-2022, an ordinance amending section seven of the city Cape May code to establish additional stop intersections along New Jersey Avenue and Broad Street.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
My comment is, I'm really not in favor of the stop signs on New Jersey Avenue. I think it's, it's an extreme change.
I, I.
Agree.
Certainly, there's, I think, a lot more, many more questions we have than have been answered in the past, and would like to go through some of those. I mean, we've seen some, we've seen some publications that indicate that this is a big mistake in any municipality. And if there's evidence to the contrary, I'd certainly rather see that before we, we vote to do this. I know the people on New Jersey Avenue really want to see traffic slowed down. So do I on Michigan, so do the people on New York.
That's a good point.
We all have, Pittsburgh Avenue is crazy, and, but I don't think that, you know, it's been established yet that stop signs are the way to control this.
I.
So if there's more evidence, I mean, I'd, I'd like to understand why we're doing this and.
I want to point out, too, that the traffic study that was done is in draft only.
It was in March, though.
Well, but the point is it's draft, and the reason why it's draft is because a lot of elements were not able to be covered, such as, I think they had to do so many hours of an eight-hour day, looking at what cars go by and how many there are for pedestrians in the peak hours. This was also done for Almira and Broad Street, but in the past, Mot McDonald did a, a traffic study that actually did it in the summertime, and they counted vehicles. So we could use that traffic study that was complete if we wanted to put the Almira Street and Broad Street four-way stop in place, because that was actually a complete traffic study completed. The one that was just completed for New Jersey Avenue wasn't complete because of the fact that, and he even says in his last, on the last page, that this is not, they don't recommend this. If you look to the last page, it says. "All warrants are not satisfied for off-season vehicle or pedestrian volumes. Multi-stop, multi-way stop control with in-season counts."
Well, if, could I, could I just jump in?
Should be considered. It's basically, they're saying that it's not complete, and that they're not even recommending it this time because it's not complete.
I'm not hearing a lot of support from anybody, really.
Not for.
For New Jersey Avenue. So I think.
Well, we're still in this discussion, and I think, you know, some alternative ways of slowing people down should be talked about. Councilmember Baldwin was talking about putting more speed signs on that road earlier, or even just say have a, a painted on the road, really big 25 miles an hour, or even, you know, having those, those white-stripped paintings that could come down to Cape May Bridge. You notice right by the Lucky Bones, has those, those white lines that, you know, they're hardly speed bumps, but you notice them, you know, just, I think we should look into those kind of alternatives.
Because I also think anything that's flashing, that lets people know their speed, because I think sometimes it gets away from people. It's an open street, you're traveling.
A wide street.
And then, you know, people don't realize how fast they're going. If they're reminded how fast they're going, I think it can help slow people down. My other concern with putting the stop signs on New Jersey Avenue is that you're just creating the traffic to go to another street, so you're just pushing the, or kicking the can down the, down the lane.
New York Avenue.
Right. And also, all our stop streets run with this, with this capitals, like Philadelphia, Trenton, Reading, they run that way. That's where the stop signs. So all of a sudden, you're now, you're going to be throwing in stop signs in the other direction, which, you know, could create issues with people running the stop sign and creating accidents, because they're not ready for it, especially being a wide street. The stop sign's going to have to be way over to the side because of it being wide and not being invisible, being in the line of sight.
Okay.
Can I make a motion to amend this?
Sure.
Uh, to eliminate the, um, uh, the New Jersey Avenue?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so eliminate any, um, any stop signs on New Jersey Avenue?
There's six of them total.
I, I, I want to talk about the one on Almyra and Broad.
We have a motion on the floor.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Uh, I have a motion. Um, any discussion on the motion? Okay. Roll call, please. Uh, did someone second? I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes. So that would basically leave Almyra and Broad as the discussion.
And I just want to point out, even the traffic study that was completed on this, um, I think everybody got a copy of that that was done. I made sure that Aaron sent it out. Um, again, there was really no accidents in that intersection for three years. But Mot McDonald said, you know, you could if you wanted to, but it wasn't, it didn't meet the criteria. So this is more, if you want it, you can do it, but it's not, it didn't check the boxes.
I think that's a good point, and that was, when was that study done?
Twenty-twenty.
Okay. Uh, Chief of Police, do you know if there's, has been any accident, accidents in that area?
I think they said there are none. I think they pulled up, there wasn't any.
Since now, okay.
Yeah.
Well, my concern is, you know, if you're coming from Ocean Street and you're on a bike, you're coming down a hill, and a lot of people don't observe that stop sign on a bike, and sometimes they fly right through, uh, Broad Street onto Almyra. So I think it's, it might be, might be a good thing.
We, uh, we did receive, we've, over the years, over the last couple of years, we've seen, received almost like a, um, um, like fifty signatures on a page asking for a, a stop sign, including a lot of people on Almyra Street that just want to see a stop sign on Broad. If, just so everyone knows what we're talking about, you're, of course, coming from maybe Swains Hardware Store toward Broad or going toward Swains Hardware. We all know as locals, I mean, I almost come to a stop myself, because I know people are crossing, uh, Almyra Street really quickly and often have to pull out a little bit to see around a car, and, um, so, uh, the, we have had another study done and, and yeah, so it really leaves it up to us, of course, but I, I've heard from a, a large group of people from Almyra Street that want to see this happen. Like I said, I basically almost come to a stop myself just knowing that intersection, so I'd, I'd like to see a stop sign there personally.
I, I can say though that that's really becoming a thorough way from West Cape May.
Right.
So things have really changed in that area. Um, like you were saying, um, Councilmember Meyer, you know, people on bikes, I see that as the biggest hazard in that area. So if we're able to, you know, manage some of that a little bit. And I think we have the, um, the blessing of the, um, the chief as well on this one. Could you? Would you mind? Sorry, Mayor?
No, please, please, Chief, join us.
Thank you. Very welcome. Good evening again. Um, we'll start at, uh, Broad and Almyra. Yes, I've reviewed both studies, the Mot McDonald and the Shropshire study that was done, that's in draft, but was also reviewed by Mr. Orlando as well. The Almyra and Broad Street, um, stop signs, there was more things that were brought into that as far as just stop signs. They want to see crosswalks put in there. As far as painted crosswalks, that's a definite, in our opinion. The lack of zero accidents there or no accidents there doesn't mean that there won't ever be one. So just because there's no accident somewhere doesn't mean that they won't happen. So, um, we've been fortunate to have not had any accidents there. So Almyra and Broad, uh, that's, in our opinion, from the police department, green-lighted as far as where we should go with that. I don't think that one should be passed over. I do have some conversation or comments about New Jersey Avenue, um, if I may.
Please.
So if we can end with Almyra and Broad, do it, please. Um, I think that's a safety factor. With regards to New Jersey Avenue, we have received several complaints from people that live there, so that's where this all started. So this isn't something we just dreamt up in the world and said, hey, let's put stop signs out. The names, I won't name them, however, the, the people that live there, who sit on their porches and kind of sit around there and, and live there, which should be taken heavily into commerce, or consideration, they feel that it's dangerous. They feel that cars are zooming up and down there. The one thing that the Shropshire, um, study did say that, and, and was my trepidation with even reviewing it, off-season and in-season, okay? It was done in March of this year, twenty-twenty-two. After we had received the complaints from the citizens that lived on New Jersey Avenue, Lieutenant Walker was assigned to, when we get complaints like this of speeding, we do a six-day review of speed, not trap, but a speed review. So we'll send an officer out there daily for multiple hours, morning, evening, and night to kind of run that area there. That was done for the intersections, both on New Jersey Avenue, where we were...
I know some of us up here on council have seen some of those reports that you've done, and they are extensive.
Yeah, we, we have a whole breakdown of the, at the highest speeds that we were, the obtained, and some of them are twenty-four, twenty-five, some of them are thirty-three, some are the, you know, so the, there's a median range. So the, the problem with that study is you have a police car out there monitoring the area, so people do slow down, they break up, and they do their thing. So, um, that's where we first start. So we report it back. That was done in July, uh, and we did see some speeds. The Shropshire report, even though in draft form, I think their study was pretty extensive in regards that they were able to capture numbers, and they did indicate that there was speeding on New Jersey Avenue. Even if it's thirty-three or thirty-four, the speed limit is twenty-five. So my, I can't turn a blind eye to it and say that no, nothing should be done there. In the Shropshire report, it, it, it went into very great detail about what could be done, uh, the no-crash detail. And New Jersey Avenue has not, is not lonesome to tra, to crashes. Pittsburgh and New Jersey Avenue have had several significant motor vehicle accidents. My thought there is it's the speed derived from the travel up New Jersey Avenue where people forget that stop sign is there and they run it.
Can we put in a, a blinking red stop sign there?
I think that, that, that's, that's A. They're, they're expensive, and that's a cost that Public Works has to incur. However, yes, Madam, uh, Mayor, that, that's absolutely on both sides, because the, you know, coming from the poverty side over, not so much, but it's always that person who runs the traffic late coming down New Jersey where they've gotten their speed up, um, along there. So definitely flashing on, on both ways going that way. The multi-way traffic controls are warranted by several different factors, where the decision to install them, uh, according to the report and my review, where the traffic signal is justified, that's where you can do them, were five or more reported accidents. So there was no reported accidents on New Jersey, but I feel the accidents derived at Pittsburgh and, and New Jersey were, were directly from the speed on New Jersey Avenue, so that's the result that I see. So the five or more accidents, Lieutenant, I think we could probably justify that there's probably been four or five accidents on New Jersey and Pittsburgh. I think we can, we can justify that.
And, and there is a stop sign there though.
Yeah, that's, and there is a stop sign there, so it doesn't always stop you.
Yeah.
The minimum, the minimum values, because this was an off-season and in-season, I don't think that we would even gain these minimum volumes in in-season with, with their recommendations or how they derive that number, is at least three hundred vehicles per eight hours in an average day and some two hundred vehicles and pedestrians in the same day in an eight-hour period. New Jersey Avenue is busy, but not that busy, uh, in, in regards to that. You have a lot of trucks going back and forth. As we continue here as well, they had the same recommendation for all three intersections, New Jersey and Trenton, Reading, and, and Philadelphia, with all the speed lines, and their one, I think their highest speed was thirty-two miles an hour, um, at New Jersey Avenue and, and Trenton. They recommend a lot of different things in this report, which Mot McDonald would probably agree to and agree with, that either some calming devices are put in, which all incur money, all incur some studies to be further done, but their biggest thing was putting calming devices in. We talked about those in Pittsburgh with Mr. Yeager, um, and putting those along Pittsburgh. New Jersey Avenue is the widest street aside from Pittsburgh. I think it's almost wider than Pittsburgh in some pa, in some places, where you could put stop signs out there, but I, I have to agree with you, they're too far out. They're too far out for people to see them on the intersections. I think the calming devices should be looked at, looked at. I think this Shropshire report, if it's him, if it's them or Mot McDonald, whomever, if we don't use them anymore, should be an in-season report done as well, study. I, I think that should be redone, just to give clarification. Us running radar in July gives you a number, but it doesn't give you these type of traffic numbers. We're not watching pedestrians walking across the street. The, the recommendations were bump outs, I agree with. Striped crossways, I agree with. In-pavement flexible cross, crosswalk signs could be used in-season and removed in the off-season, where we do the same thing along Beach Drive, where you put pedestrians crossing there. They're, they usually get hit and laid down, but we put them back up. They're in-season, I think they're, that's definite. Um, there's some consideration with the ADA and American with disabilities. Some ramps should be done there. I'm pretty sure that most of the curbs there are already ramped up, but they, they could be considered. Our Bike Safety Committee could look at the bike lanes in there. We have that road, that road there, that's unlike Columbia Avenue. I, I agree with, with, uh, the, um, the sharrows and things like that, where it's more designated, the lines are more designated. I think that's a plus. Um, again, with the visibility of the stop sign on the sides of roads, it's, it's not indicative. This study needs to be redone.
Well, I, I want to point out, because I've sent them, the rest of council, I don't think I sent it to you.
Yes, ma'am.
The MUTCD, which is the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices.
I've reviewed that one.
Which is the federal and state guideline, says stop signs should not be used to slow traffic down, because what they find out is that people actually speed between the stop signs. And that, um, they also said that the stop sign should be installed in a manner that minimizes the number of vehicles having to, to stop, because that actually increases crashes when you have more vehicles all coming to a stop, because what people do is just roll through the stop sign, and they're not actually stopping. Um, so that's what, you know, I was based on. If there's a, a need to slow traffic down, according to the federal and state guidelines, you don't want to be putting in stop signs because it's not going to cure the issue. But, um, I like what you're saying about, and what they said here about the traffic calming devices, which is more reasonable.
Yeah, I think so. I, I don't want to steer away from the, the citizens that live and the residents that live there and disregard their concerns, because there are concerns, but I think there's other avenues. If I'm speaking about anyone here, there are other avenues to slow the traffic down. Also putting the stop signs there, I, I've received multiple complaints from the side streets in the Village Green section that you're going to push them to our street. I don't want to do that either, you know what I mean? So those are smaller streets, so if you push them off of New Jersey onto New York, Jules, you're going to find that they're going to just use the opposite way. If I know how to get around town and sneak around town, I'm going to do the opposite. Once you put stop signs up, I'm going to avoid them at all costs. I don't go the opposite way on Trenton Avenue in, from Beach Drive towards Wawa. I'll take Pittsburgh because there's no stop signs.
So...
Calming devices, absolutely, Mayor.
So we're hearing, uh, because we have taken the signs off, off of this ordinance right now, as it stands, just... But I'm, we're hearing recommendations for sharrows, one.
Mm-hmm.
Blinking, um, stop sign at Pittsburgh Avenue. I think we all...
On both sides of New Jersey, yeah.
On both sides. Um, we're all in agreement there, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. I, I'm just kind of taking notes for the city manager and, and the...
And I think we need the, one that, one that tells people how fast they're going.
The speed sign.
Yeah, that was also a recommendation there, except for, because there's not, and there's speed limit signs across there, but they're, they're stretched out two hundred feet or so. They're, they're too, they're too limited. Signs cost a little bit of money, but they cost less than a life, so.
Yeah.
Put more of those roadway, you know, speed signs so these people know, oh crap, I'm, I'm going speed, I'm speeding.
Chief, we're, we're getting a lot more requests for the speed signs. I think the city really should be ordering maybe a half dozen, so we have them to put them in different locations.
It couldn't hurt also to put one at Madison in New Jersey on the opposite end, down past Kiwanis Club on the backside.
Right.
You know, because you put one at one side, you put it there. I mean, we've had crashes at Madison in, in New Jersey as well.
Right.
I just want to bring up putting that red blinking stop sign at New Jersey and Pittsburgh.
Yes, ma'am.
Should we look into putting that red blinking sign at other streets coming into Pittsburgh?
It, it, we, we, it couldn't, it can't hurt. We had a, a fatal accident.
That's what I, that's what I was bringing it up, yeah.
Um, there were some issues there. The, the young gentleman that went into the reeds, I don't know that he didn't stop, but he definitely didn't stop.
Because I see New Jersey's a little bit different because of, the street continues.
Yes.
Where the other ones are almost, um, except for, I guess, Philadelphia.
Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania, and, and there's other streets that look like they continue. Coldwell Bankers would say with the street that, that like you could, you, it looks like there's another street that connects there, that should connect into Soul Track, into there. So there's, if there is a cost with the blinking lights, but again, that cost is very minimal to life. So I agree that, you know, some extra money. Well, yeah, Dennis, hey Dennis, I need more money.
So let's, yeah, I agree. Any of the streets that cross Pittsburgh, I think we want to be looking at a blinking stop sign. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's, that's the things you should look at there to, to, and then the calming devices on New Jersey Avenue, that study, and if there's grant funding for that, that absolutely should look into. Again, I don't want to dissuade the comments and the concerns of New Jersey Avenue residents. I think we can do it in another fashion, where we put the pedestrian bump outs in there.
And I also, there's nothing that's better than the police sitting there and catching a few people speeding that they won't see again. I think that's like the biggest deterrent.
It is.
A few tickets and you might get the word out that that's going to be...
And that's, that was the biggest issue, I think, with New Jersey Avenue for us, was reviewing it, that, yes, in the off-season, it's the residents and you and I that drive up and down that road, but come seasonally, twenty thousand exchanges of houses and residents, it happened every week.
Yeah, but that...
And there's people don't pay attention to this.
Yeah, but that, that's, we can't use that as an excuse. We all go on vacation.
Yeah, and every...
And we can't say, I'm on vacation, you can't give me a speeding ticket.
No, exactly, but our enforcement could increase there on that street amongst others, and then the thought of the Shropshire or whomever you have look at it again, go more defined. We want to look at how many calming devices we could place across there. I don't want to say the bad word of putting an island down there, but you might think of something like that. Pennsylvania Avenue Islands, Lou, you're looking at me in Ireland. He's looking at me bad. I'm going to shut up about islands. Goodbye.
We just had the county, okay. All right, thank you, Chief, very much. So we have a, um, amended ordinance at this point that only includes, uh, um, Broad and, uh, Almyra Street. Uh, any other comments or questions on that, Council?
No.
No? Okay.
Would you like to introduce as amended?
Vote, uh, do, do we have that motion already? I'm sorry.
I thought we already voted amended.
We did. Do we have a motion?
Now you need to introduce it.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve as amended, or to introduce as amended, excuse me.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes, and I do want to go out of order for just one second. I recognize that there's a couple of folks here that maybe wanted to speak on New Jersey Avenue or Almyra. Um, I want to give them an opportunity. While, the whole point of what we're doing tonight is, hopefully, was in reaction to what the folks on New Jersey and Almyra wanted to do. So if anyone would like to speak, please come to the microphone and, and give your name and address.
Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Jean Krupinski. I live at thirteen oh seven New Jersey Avenue. Um, we're right behind Peter Shields, a big gray house we redid last year. We were amazed at the volume of cars, and I have to admit, we have this big porch, so we sit on this porch. We have a second-floor porch in the mornings. It's contractors and pizza delivery guys. And it's not, we're, you, you're saying it's going, you know, into town, uh, out of town. It's really going into town. So I think they figured out that's the street they can go all the way down, and honest to God, like, when you guys were there, right? The car was there. Even I slowed down when the cop car's there, right? Like, but, um, it's, somebody's going to get killed because you have people crossing the street and they're not watching, and they're going like forty, fifty miles an hour. And it's really, you know, it's contractors in the morning. It's mostly in the morning, not necessarily during the day. It's when everybody's, you know, getting to the job by eight o'clock in the morning type of thing, but it's really scary. Like, we came from U Street, so it was kind of, you know, it's just really a shock. I have another house in a town called Westfield, New Jersey, up at exit one thirty-five, and they have some major roads there that they put, is the calming device a speed bump?
No, you can't put those in New Jersey. It's bump outs, so you should kind of narrow your route.
Oh, well, they put, they put speed bumps in, and it has changed everybody's life. I mean, everybody now goes twenty-five miles an hour because you're hitting the speed bump, you know, and you've, so anything... But I was kind of shocked the way you guys were originally talking about New Jersey Avenue, and I was like, wait a minute. They, you have no idea what's going on there. When they make the right, you know, past, uh, on Pittsburgh, I guess that is, right? And coming down New Jersey Avenue, that first block to Trenton specifically is, is pretty bad. And if you ever want to come sit on our front porch and watch it, I'll serve coffee, okay?
I think then, I think this is a good timeframe for the chief to have people out there, you know? Because if you're saying these are contractors.
Coffee, coffee.
If you're saying they're contractors, then they're, they're, they're daily, right?
Yeah.
It's not just the tourist that comes once a year. This is something where we can probably correct the behavior.
Yeah, as long as the police car is hidden, right? Because we'll all slow down if the car is there, right? We all do that by instinct. But, um, I don't want you to think there is not a problem there, because there really is, okay?
Can I ask, did you support the stop signs or you didn't want them?
I want stop signs. I want anything. I, yes, I support. Yes. Anything, I think if stop signs are a cheap way to do this, let's try it. Um, I understand what you read, but, um, you know, once those contractors know that there's a stop sign, hopefully they'll slow down. I, I do agree that some will probably push to New York Avenue, but New York is so tiny of a street versus New Jersey. I think that it's, it's worth it. Um, we got to do something and, and not let this push off another couple of years, because we all know by what, we're just more people are going to come to Cape May.
No, and, and that's why it was on the agenda tonight. We definitely want to do something.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
So, uh, I think as much as it was within the city manager's authority to do some pe, uh, speed signage, at least get that going as soon as possible. Yeah, and, and the chief will, will have some, uh, op, op.
Yeah.
I, I think Lieutenant Walker's already drafting a, a notice right now, so.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. He's been on some.
And feel free to exchange, uh, information with...
Yeah, it's just shocking. But out, out there in the country of Cape May, it's crazy, the way the speeds people are driving, and somebody's going to get hurt. You know, you have all those bicycles, people on bicycles, and the contractors driving all over, and everybody's on their phone, and, you know what I mean? It's crazy. But thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Did anyone else want to speak on that?
Yeah.
Ma'am?
Hello, Denise McGinn. I live at 1013 New Jersey, and with all respect to my neighbor, I don't see any speeding. So I just wanted to put that out there, because coming around Pittsburgh, maybe like that first block, it might, they might be speeding, but they're not speeding in front of my house. And we're owned over 20 years. We sit on our porch, too, and, and we don't see it. And like when, when my husband and I saw this thing about the stop signs, we were like, oh my God, I have to go to the meeting, because, you know, we were very much against the stop signs and.
You were against it, I'm sorry.
Against, very much against.
Thank you.
Because I don't think it will help. I think, somebody mentioned the big white Xs on the street with the 25 in the road. I think that will really work. I mean, we have slowed down on our own street because we realize, like, it's very important. But to see that as a reminder, I think is a great idea out front of Lucky Bones, just to wait things. I agree, the stop signs are very far apart and it's really hard to see. Where we do see speeding, and we see it at the other end of the day, at the, like 11, 12 o'clock at night, when the workers come out, and they're going out of town, and they're speeding up New Jersey to get home, we see that very much during the summer, you know, late at night. But I just want to add our perspective and.
Thank you.
Love New Jersey Avenue.
Thank you.
It's interesting that both residents, even though they disagree on the stop signs, both say it's workers. It's not the tourists, it's the worker that, yeah, that's behavior.
Interesting.
Change behavior.
Okay. Mrs. Hendricks?
Patricia Gray Hendricks, 106 Trenton Avenue. I live between New York and New Jersey, so I see it all, 37 years. Tonight, you were going to introduce an ordinance, but I think the real truth is in how it was put and what was said in the ordinance. If I may for a moment, whereas the city makes ordinances regulating the stopping of traffic without the approval of the Commissioner of Transportation pursuant to NJSA 394-197, so long as consistent with the manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices for Streets and Highways, Department of Transportation. Whereas the city has obtained an engineering judgment or study consistent with the manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, is furtherance of a recommendation to make the following amendments. So I believe that the city has correctly cited the manual on the Uniform Traffic Control Devices, known as MUTCD, as Deputy Mayor Sheehan pointed out, and they use that authority granted by the Highway Safety Act of 1966 in this ordinance. So it's a document that is issued by the Federal Highway Administration to specifically standard, put the standards by which traffic signs, road surface markings, and signals are designated, installed, and used. So if you look at the State Traffic Commission, it clearly says in the regulations on the use of stop signs, they cite, and this applies to Cape May City, stop signs should normally be erected on the minor street to stop the lesser flow. Stop signs should not be used for speed control. The state regulations clearly state even that portable stop signs should only be used for emergency purposes. These regulations mirror the general guidance provided by the MUTCD. So maybe the Washington Street and Franklin Street portable signs could actually be in violation. But the principle of stop signs should not be used for speed control. It's based on a study. It says, where stop signs have been installed for the purpose of controlling the speed of vehicles, rather than to reduce the likelihood of vehicle conflicts at intersecting roads, vehicle speeds between the sign installations typically increase over what they were prior to the signs before they were erected. So I just, I'm not for or against the stop signs, but I just would like to point out to council tonight that the decision to introduce ordinance 463-2022 tonight was premature until a completed traffic study. I didn't even know that one was done. Thank you for sharing that, Deputy Mayor Sheehan. But the path forward should ensure the safety of residents and visitors based on guidance from this formal group of manual on uniform traffic control devices. The conversation tonight was rich. It was rich. It was filled with stories anecdotal. The chief of police got up and talked about what has and hasn't been done. But at this point, I don't even really understand, and I think the people on New Jersey, the people on New York, the other streets, were perhaps wondering why it is that such an ordinance would be so far as to go on the agenda. And I really encourage a topic like that, just as it was for the harbor master, just as it was for the transportation study that you were talking about. This would have been a very, very good discussion item, and then you'd have ended up exactly where you are today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comment? All right, that was a rich discussion. I appreciate it. We are on to, we did, okay, we are on to 464?
I believe we handled that one earlier with Mr. Doherty.
Oh, yep.
So next up, we have ordinances for second reading and consideration for adoption. We have 456-2022, an ordinance amending section 525 of the city code regarding vertical datum standards and confirming the applicability of NAVD 88, and this was tabled from the last council meeting.
Do I have a motion?
There is a public hearing scheduled for this evening, and the solicitor may also have some comments.
Right, so my apologies to the three members of the planning board that are here tonight. This will probably be the unteethed time you've discussed this, but I, it's important to point out that the ordinance as amended that's in your packet reflects the comments from the planning board, that it's consistent with the master plan, and I'll just go over those briefly. Section one of the ordinance, it's D2, the height in the existing code will be changed from 11 to 10, and NAVD 88 will be the standard. And then in D3, the level of lowest floor is to be not less than 9.5 NAVD 88. That's replacing old language that said 10 and a half feet above mean sea level. And both of those comments were part of the discussion at the planning board and incorporated their comments.
I just have a clarification question. Since we're changing the two numbers that were the only things that were changed, does this have to go back to a first reading?
It's this, you, what I would recommend that you do is you can make a motion to incorporate those changes, and then you will, this will be first reading again, republication, notice, and then the next meeting, you'll be able to adopt on second, second reading and adoption.
Should we make that motion or hear public comment?
I always prefer to have public comment before a city council starts the process.
I only, only because of the minor change, that's all, but anyone from the public wish to speak on this? Just to fill everyone in, this is, this is a pretty obvious thing to change from 1929 numbers, is that right? To the 88 numbers, have no idea why it hasn't been changed over the years, but it's obviously confusing to the office as much as it was confusing to the planning board at our last meeting. So this, this should take away from some of that confusion. Seeing no one commenting, does someone wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to introduce this ordinance as amended.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Next, we have ordinance 457-2022, an ordinance amending section 525 and 417 of the city code regarding expiration and extension of variance approval. This was also tabled from the 419 council meeting.
We have a public hearing on this one? Anyone from the public wish to speak on ordinance 461, excuse me, ordinance 457? Mr. Roush?
Jules Roush, 1010, New York. More of a question for the solicitor. We talk about extending the validity of a plan. Where does the conditions that were part of that plan approval come into being extended as well?
In what sense?
Very often, when plans are approved, they're approved with certain conditions.
Right.
Those conditions normally would not be done without the plan being, being activated.
So any conditions that are associated with the approval are all baked in the cake together. So you have, if you have the, what this does, you have, right now, we have variance approvals with conditions that can last in perpetuity. That's not necessarily the case for subdivisions and site plans, because those are governed by provisions in the municipal land use law that have dates that people need to meet, file plans, and apply for extensions. But if, for example, somebody just has a single family home, and they want to extend a deck or do an addition, that's not a site plan, that's just a variance application to the zoning board, and the zoning board may grant a variance with conditions, and that variance and those conditions can live forever right now. What this ordinance would do is put a sunset on them of two years, and that sunset would apply to any of those conditions that were.
Okay, so that's, that's really the question I had. Those conditions that are part of the plan that's conditional approval will, will tie in with the extension.
Correct. And.
And terminate if the plan expires.
That's correct.
That's, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this ordinance?
If I may, mayor?
Yes.
This similar comment to the previous NAVD ordinance. This incorporates, the ordinances before council tonight has amendments, final amendments, incorporating final comments from the planning board with consistency, and I'll just go over them briefly. Under, this is new section, section one of the ordinance 52590, that would be a new section under the code, section A. I just want to point out that the expiration, it indicates that a variance or variances permitting, construction or alteration of buildings, structures, or other improvements shall expire unless the applicant has secured and maintains a building permit to commence construction. The language, secured and maintained, I interpret that as someone would have to continue to have a valid building permit. Building permits can expire, but it keeps the onus on the person presumably getting the benefit of this protection to not just get the permit, trigger the protection, and then give up on the project and have a vacant project. So it's kind of putting a leash on that process, too. So secured and maintains is the language. And then new section F, under 52590, it's on the second page, and that indicates that in the event the applicant has applied for a building permit on or before the expiration date, which would be the two years, the running of the period of limitations herein shall be told for up to 20 business days to accommodate permit review. In the event the permit is denied or invalidated, the variance will then expire, and the applicant may pursue a request for extension pursuant to the above, which may be granted or denied, depending on what the particular application is. But that language addressed one of, a question or comment from the planning board about, what about someone that's kind of on the eve of expiration, they apply, but they don't have a permit yet? You're building in the UCC review process, which is 20 business days to review a construction permit. So you're kind of giving somebody the same, that same time period that they would get under the UCC.
Great. Any questions or comments, counsel? Okay, roll call.
I have one clarification question. Does this require us to go back to first reading with this?
Yes, and that same comment as before, that counsel can entertain a motion to incorporate those amendments and introduce on first reading.
Do I have a motion to amend?
I'll make that motion to amend.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
So now we're making a motion to introduce? I'll make that motion.
I believe that was incorporated with the last motion.
It was.
Okay. Okay.
You're okay with your second?
Yep.
Yep.
Is that okay?
It's good.
Yeah, okay.
All right. And next, counsel, we have 461-2022, an ordinance amending section 412 regarding outdoor seating for consumption of food or beverages, and there is a public hearing scheduled tonight as well.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 461? Please come to the microphone, state your name. Sir, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, my name is Paul Johnston, current restaurant owner, 405 South Beach Avenue. I have the old ordinance here and the new one, and I don't see any changes. The fee's the same, $2.50 and $500 for escrow fee. What are, what's the difference?
There, there's a redlined version in the, have you seen the copy of the?
No, I got a copy yesterday, and, and I can't find a difference.
Mr. Johnson, you have the old, you have the existing ordinance, is what we were looking at yesterday.
I have this one here.
Okay, that, that looks like it was printed off the website. Sir, I can, I can just explain, we are on second reading now, so I don't, can go through this briefly. We have an existing outdoor seating ordinance.
Right, it's, it was, it was passed in 2017.
Right. And this is an amendment to that.
Okay.
Which provides certain clarifications, such as, you know, the applicant's going to provide cut sheets depicting the material and styro materials that's going to be used. That's new language. The chapter, this, it confirms that the ordinance contemplates seating in connection with food and beverage services, not outdoor bars. Outdoor bars are not permitted or contemplated by that section. No furniture or other appurtenances shall be chained to poles or other structures in view of the streetscape. It clarifies, any heating or, or AC apparatuses serving the outdoor dining area shall be subject to approval of the Bureau of Fire Prevention and position so as to preserve five feet of pedestrian egress. No outdoor cooking facilities are permitted by this chapter, no additional signage is permitted by this chapter, including street or chalk signs. The last seating for any outdoor dining area shall be no later than 9:30 PM, which was an amendment based on the last discussion. No public address system shall be utilized. It clarifies that this ordinance provides for allocation of existing seating, not the creation of new or additional seating. No change in grading or drainage shall be permitted by this chapter. Contemplates that the County Board of Health is going to have some say on that. Sale or service of alcoholic beverages in these locations may be permitted, subject to compliance with all applicable ABC regulations and statutes, including an extension of premises application. It provides regulations for safety in terms of umbrellas, you know, number of umbrellas tied to the number of tables, location to provide safe pedestrian egress. It clarifies and confirms that the, the ordinance is intended to provide a streamlined process to permit outdoor seating not impacting parking, circulation, or other issues implicating site plan review. So applicants are not permitted to eliminate parking areas, public or private, in connection with an outdoor seating permit pursuant to this section. Nothing herein shall prevent any applicant from seeking conventional site plan or other appropriate land use approval. The last portion of this provides temporary use of the right-of-way, provided certain conditions are met, and public health and safety conditions can be met. I won't go into great detail, and I understand.
I do have a question for you. So you just touched on three, three statements. You just touched on three, three statements prior to that. I'm looking at all three ordinances, the one you gave me just now, the one in 2017, and I guess the first draft. All three have the same licenses. Second, second sentence on the paragraph, it says, "This subsection does not apply to any food service establishment that has previously received site plan approval for outdoor dining. Those establishments may continue to operate without the necessity of additional..." Permitting under this subset, under the subsection. So, if you have a site plan approval, you wouldn't need to have this second approval, that would be redundant, is that correct? That'd be double jeopardy.
So, no, we're not going to get into double jeopardy.
Okay, well, be redundant, let me strike the double jeopardy word, I would say redundant, use that word instead.
Well, I, look, I know why you're here. I, I know you've communicated with the clerk's office-
Correct.
And reached out to me, you reached out to Mr. Herliss, you reached out to Mr.-
Well, that's, that's why I came.
And that's okay, that's okay. We're not here to, like, judge your-
No, I just made, I made a general question, so, you know, it's-
Right, right, so that, and my general answer to that is that if you have a site plan approval, well, then you have site plan approval. This is a streamlined process for those applications that don't implicate parking, that don't change circulation or change site conditions such that you would require site plan approval. So, if you got approval for 300 seats, and you're able to allocate them onsite in conformance with this, that should be fine under this code. And if the, the planning board or zoning board told you you can have seats on a particular location, that's fine. This is to provide a streamlined process for people that maybe they don't have to go to the, go through the rigmarole of going through the planning and zoning process.
My, that's my follow-up question. If you went through the rigmarole or gone through the planning process, why be redundant and go through this?
It's, this isn't, this is not intended to be redundant, it's, and I don't think it has been applied that way in practice. It's if you have existing seating, let's say you have 100 seats on a site, and you're able to present a plan to the city clerk that has, you want to take 30 of those seats and put them in an outdoor area that's not a public right-of-way, let's just keep it simple, and not, is not eliminating parking or implicating, you know, increasing the parking burden or eliminating parking, this provides an avenue for that, and provided you meet certain conditions.
Another question. All three proposals here, well, the latest proposal, the first one, the draft, and this one, all contain, on the last page, no granted property rights. So, how do you, how do you match the no granted property rights with the, with the absolute property rights you see through a, through a site plan application? You're saying that this does not take away from your site plan property rights, but-
This doesn't-
According to this application, it may.
No, this does not take away anything. What it does is it-
Well, it says right here, you're vulnerable to losing your property rights if the city council elects to change the ordinance.
If you obtain a permit pursuant to this section, you're on notice that this section is subject to change, which is what council's doing right now.
Right.
They're adding new conditions.
I think it's a valid question. If, if a council can change the ordinance, wouldn't that subject to losing your, subject to, uh-
This doesn't take away site plan approval, it doesn't take away anything that a board did. What it does is, if this, there's a time when this didn't exist at all. So, when they created it and people got permits, they were on notice that, look, council could, in their infinite wisdom, change this, make it better, make tweaks, which is what they're doing tonight and why we're having a public hearing on this.
Well, I'm not quite satisfied with those answers.
Well, what, what, what didn't you get?
A pre-existing site plan approval should supersede this, this, this requirement.
I, if you have, if somebody has a site plan approval for outdoor seating, you, you almost don't need this.
Okay, that's my, that's my, thank you.
But, I will say this, if your approval contains certain conditions, those conditions-
Got it.
...apply to the property owner.
Thank you.
This is for use of city property, right? This is for the use of city property, not for your own property?
It, it's actually for both, Councilmember Meyer, it includes the, I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine.
It includes the option to use sidewalks in a limited manner, but if you, doesn't require, you know, if you have available property, if you have a, an open lawn, for example, you can allocate your seating, take some from the inside, put it out here if you like, and so it provides an opportunity for all, and some people may not have the personal, the private property to use, and then it provides an opportunity to use a sidewalk.
And this doesn't apply to the mall?
No. The area of the mall is governed by the patio permit process.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
No, that's fine. I'm Kelly Carter-Courier, 398 Congress Street, and I don't know, I think, I have a concern about noise. I'm all for outdoor seating, I love it, but some of the restaurants have, the last two years especially, have had extremely loud music, and one particular restaurant has gone almost till 10:30 many nights. I pray when it rains. I, I love when it rains at night, because then they can't have it, which, you know. And then there's some restaurants that we hear, and again, we only hear it depending on the way the wind's going, so thank God it's not seven days a week, all the restaurants. And, but, like, the Rusty Nail, we've heard music for a long time, and, but they end at nine o'clock, and so I can live with that. But, I'm getting old, and I go to bed usually around 8:30 or 9:00, and I'm not going to shut my windows on a beautiful night because I can hear my ocean, hear the ocean. And, so I have one particular restaurant, but I guess my first question is, is there an ordinance that says they can't be going till 10:30 at night?
Yes.
Or am I-
Please answer.
I mean that.
We have, this, the noise ordinance is generally applicable to every property in, in the city of Cape May, and we have a noise ordinance. So, if somebody is causing a noise disturbance at an hour that's not permitted, that's, that can be a force. We don't have to change the ordinance or add anything, too. So, that, you can consider that an overlay over any other zoning or police power ordinance that they're discussing today.
Okay, but, I mean, so, yeah, so my big thing is, I think outdoor seating is wonderful, and, and music until, you know, maybe until 9:00, and then go inside and have your music? I don't know if that, is that part of this, or is it just about having outdoor seating?
Um, not necessarily. This is just dealing with outdoors, just dealing with the dining aspect.
Okay.
Kind of shifting tables from in and out.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll point out to council that this, that type of thing is, is addressed in a number of different ways. One, I mentioned the noise ordinance, but when council renews liquor licenses every year, there's also conditions that are included, and some of it is limitations on noise and outdoor music and those types of things. So, and I, we've seen that in the past, we saw that last year, so there are other, we have the existing code, then there's also liquor license conditions that are imposed on an annual basis that include that, so maybe-
Can I get those? I mean, are they open to the public?
Oh, absolutely. It's public record.
So, I could, I could go and say, you know, this particular place is playing really loud music till 10:30.
It has every single restaurant and what their specific allowances are.
Okay.
We, they're, they're renewed during the summer every year.
Okay.
That's usually, July is usually when the renewals come up, but the one that's, we passed one last summer, I'm sorry.
I, I was just going to say, if you'd like to email me and just request last year's resolutions-
Yeah.
All the special conditions are attached.
Oh, good.
So, it's cityclerk@capemaycity.com.
Okay.
So, I can send you last year's, because we usually just, unless council wants to make any changes, we usually just recycle the special conditions every year.
Okay, great.
But all of them, applaud me, all of them have to be done by 10:00, regardless, that's overall, so there may be different ones. And anytime, any, you hear it after 10:00, you should report it to the police if that's bothering you.
But, so, basically, they can be as loud as they want to be till 10:00, is that?
No, no. There's a, there's a decibel.
Is, is, there's a limitation on decibels, and, and, you know, there's a bit of reasonableness that goes into that, too, you know, what's appropriate in the summer may be not appropriate in the dead of winter, too. So, but there is, at the very least, there is decibel ratings in the noise ordinance, and there's also time limits, too. And you'll, you'll find that, it, you, you may be looking at this and saying, like, where's that? But it's, it is, it's located, it's there, but it's located in different spaces, like the, the conditions on liquor license and the, and then the noise ordinance.
Okay. The liquor license with the outdoor music, that's, for outdoor music, that's located in the liquor license?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Mr. Roush?
This was Roush, 1010 New York Avenue. The outdoor dining on publicly owned property, is that designated to only be used by the adjoining restaurant or bar? Or is there, are there limitations as to who can use that property?
It's got to have some connection to the, the right-of-way, because I think inevitably if there's a disconnect between the premises that's operating and the right-of-way being used, you're creating probably a, a traffic issue with staff going back and forth. So, that's ultimately left up to be a judgment call with city manager's office, and the police department, and the zoning officers, they review these applications.
Because I believe that has been an issue in the past, where a restaurant was, was not located next to the properties that they were serving, and that property was city property. In other words, could, could a restaurant go two blocks away on a city-owned property if the zoning permitted it?
No, I think that would be unreasonable under this. It's, it's really look, looking to, if the, if, what we're trying to do under this ordinance is recognize that some people have private property to work with and others do not. So, you know, we wouldn't be jumping from property to property normally, under normal circumstances. So, I think what this is trying to do is give somebody a reasonable location within striking distance to utilize a right-of-way that's close in proximity to their restaurant or, or bar, whatever it is.
And this is not supposed to be taken into consideration, the mall? The mall is a different entity.
Yeah, I realize that. To what extent can the, can the bar or restaurant improve, well, I'll just bring it up, there was, there's been an addition to an existing bar where they, they built a, an awning out over the public sidewalk and erected two posts to support that awning? So, the question is, to what extent can the bar or restaurant improve the public property that they're occupying?
This doesn't provide for laying brick or pouring concrete or laying foundations or anything like that. What this talks about is, if you want to take some tables that are appropriate pursuant to the standards in here, and some temporary materials in service of that restaurant, then that's what that provides, but we're not, we're not looking for permanent with these right-of-way permits.
Would you consider an awning that's erected on two vertical posts, they're, they're secured into the, into the surface, a permanent improvement?
I don't know, Mr. Roush, I'm not going to get into whatabouts on this. It's, it's, I, I see where you're getting at, but the, the goal here is not to have permanent structures, it's, it's to have, you know, you got temporary tables that are, you know, the materials that we're calling for here, and they could, at the end of the season, they can be taken away when they're not needed. That's the goal here.
The only other question is, we have an ordinance that requires everyone that has a restaurant or bar to abide by a international code, a safety code, where the tables and chairs must provide for safety egress. And, and that is an issue that we have in the town.
And that's an issue that's incorporated in the safe ingress and egress and adequate pedestrian access, safety, fire, all of that is incorporated in here, and if the city manager or any department determines that this is not a safe result, the city has the authority to say, "We're not going to do it."
I wish that would be, I wish that were enforced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anita Novino, and I live at 351 Congress Street, across the street from Kelly. And I just have to say this because it's on my mind and been on my mind for a long time. I'm very concerned about the fact that things don't get enforced in Cape May. Okay, so, there's a lot of work that goes into everything, but there's not a lot of enforcement. Okay, so, I know that there's, you know, a movement afoot to do outside dining, more or less, I'm not sure how it'll come out. I'm not happy to see dogs where there's dining. I think it presents a safety hazard, among other things. I was in the mall today, and I saw three or four dogs, okay, being walked through the mall. And now, don't laugh, and don't think that I'm hallucinating, there was a woman in the mall with a chicken. Okay? She had a chicken on her lap. So, now I'm starting to wonder if you're not going to have to change all of the signs. Okay? So, when you consider the budget, you better consider that in it as well. That's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, I think we'll have to have code enforcement cry foul on that. I don't think they got one left, all right. Mr. Crowley?
Dennis Crowley, 806 Lafayette Street. Question of clarification, actually, and it's my understanding that, that the section of this ordinance, it would permitting the use of public spaces in any restaurant or tavern throughout the city is, is new law, new policy. And the interesting thing about that, is, I mean, is that correct, Russ? This is new stuff, I would think?
It's, this covers, outdoor dining is a permitted use in the commercial districts.
Right.
And then, as applied, when that was adopted, that applied also to pre-existing, non-conforming uses.
Right, but this, this applies to any, any restaurant or tavern irrespective of what zoning, what, what zone it's in.
It would apply to every-
Every, everything in the city.
Today, that's in, in existence today.
Right. Now, this ordinance also requires that any application for the use of public space has to be approved by the city council.
Correct.
Now, are we prepared to be able to receive permits, review them, and approve them between now and the beginning of the current season? Because this will go, when does this take effect?
This would not go into effect until May 31st.
May 31st?
So, we already have a process in place, so the entire process isn't new. We are going to have to make some tweaks to a new application and whatnot, but the idea is, is that the process will stay the same, where everything gets submitted to my office for complete, a completeness check, we'll forward it to the zoning officer, police, fire, whatever other professionals need to review it. Once it gets through that review, at that point, if it's been recommended, it would then go to council if they are requesting use of city right-of-way. Like, it would go through that review process before going to council, because why waste council's time if it's not safe or plausible? So, there is a process in place, we're not reinventing the wheel, but we will have to tweak it, and we can't do that, we will prep ahead of time, but this will not go into effect until May 31st.
So, you can all see what I'm talking about now. Is this precipitous? Can this be done? My concern is, I don't know. And I hope someone in the city government will be able to alleviate my fear about this, because this new provision, which accommodates the public, the use of public space for businesses, is going to create a very attractive option for a lot of businesses, and they're going to have to go through that process that Aaron just described, and it's going to have to be done after the 31st of May. That's troubling, and that's my only comment.
I, I'd like to comment on that if I may.
Go ahead, please.
We've looked into this pretty hard, and a lot of these businesses do not have access to the public space needed when it comes to ingress and egress and other things, safety. And a lot of these businesses don't have their own property they can utilize either, so, you know, it's, it's just, who's going to benefit? Not, not everybody, but it's trying to accommodate those who, who can use that space appropriately, responsibly. trying to accommodate those who, who can use that space appropriately, responsibly.
And this is a question for Chris. Does the council have to approve the denial of this application?
No, no. The, it only gets to council if the administrative review is complete. And if I can kind of respond to your concern about, are we ready to receive these? It's on the applicant to comply with all this, get their insurance and all that stuff together. So we, we need a, a complete application that checks all the boxes before it gets to this table. So by the time it gets to this table, it really should be kind of an easy call because the, the legwork should have, have been done by the applicant and then...
Can I, can I interject just one thing? I, I just, kind of on behalf of the council members here too, because I've heard from a couple of them, and including myself. The process right now, which there really isn't one, okay, that's, that's the problem. And without naming any names or any council members, I think we've all received text messages, phone calls from different businesses that are asking for this and asking for that. And all of us are uncomfortable with that. We do not want to get private phone calls and ask for private meetings. We don't like, I, I don't like it. I know everyone up here is very uncomfortable with that process.
I sympathize.
But what we're trying to do is say, "If you really want this, come to this table in front of the entire town and tell us what you want." And that's, that's the process that...
So your application, the application for the merchant will be before you and at a public meeting?
Yes.
If all of the steps below that process are cleared by the city staff?
And, and the point there, of course, is not to have just a frivolous, you know, application that wouldn't meet other standards, you know? Have it meet the right standards. We want to use public property. Come to the council meeting and make your request.
And there's no appeal process of denial below you in the act, so you're covered that way. Right?
Correct. This is, it's, ultimately, this is a zoning officer determination.
Gotcha. All right. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I, I did just say, Mayor, I really appreciate you making that statement. That's really important for people to understand.
Thank you.
Chris, how, I know it's not covered underneath, underneath this, but how, is there anything in place for the mall merchants to use city property? Does that come before council at all?
Yes. Well, I mean, that doesn't come before council. That is codified in our code under the patio permit process. Similar standards, you know, there's still public health and safety considerations and egress that are taken into consideration. They also want, don't want tables going out into the center line of the mall. But that process goes through the clerk's office. I think the city manager reviews it as well. So it's, it's similar, same concept, but different process.
And do they have to be properly connected to where this, the seating's going?
Yes. And like I said, I think proximity is the key. It's got to be, have some reasonable relation. It can't be, you know, across an expanse or across the street, but having it in close proximity is, is, I think, the rule.
And, I'm sorry. Is there a fee associated with that? That's already in the ordinance for the fee that's associated with that?
Right. So the fee that's in here is similar to that of the patio permit, square footage. So that's, to, to make those two, to have continuity.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion? I'm sorry.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Do we do it?
I don't think we did.
I don't think we did. We don't have a motion yet.
There is no motion to adopt yet.
Motion from Mr. Meyer.
I'll second.
Any discussion or ready for roll call?
Any discussion, council? Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Next, council, we have the public portion on the resolutions only. Anybody wishing to publicly comment on the resolutions listed on the consent agenda, please come forward and give your name and address at this time.
Any public comment on resolutions only at this point? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me. I'm sorry. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Warren Copeland, 737 Washington Street. I don't have the, in front of me, but the last item on the list, I believe should be broken out and read aloud and offer a comment and the public be offered to comment.
This is that, this is that time, if you...
Yeah, if you want to comment on that.
Anything you can...
Do you want us to read it out loud first?
Well, well, it has to be read out loud, otherwise you can't have a comment.
Well, that's a good point.
Would you just like me to read the title, please?
Excuse me?
The title. I believe you're talking about 13805-2022, Resolution Authorizing Professional Services Contract to Mills and Snow Waring?
Yes, the AME Church.
Yeah, Architects LLC for Preparation of a Preservation Plan and Concept Design Study for the Allen AME Church.
So it, it seems that that's an important historic building in the city. It's also a culturally important building in the city. It seems like any significant activity regarding that property, the public should have an, an opportunity to hear what is being presented and then to comment on it. So without knowing what's in it, of course, I can't comment, but I think it's reasonable to break it out, put it into the category above. Let's hear what it is and then give the public a chance to comment.
Does someone want to make a motion to pull this from the consent agenda?
I was going to pull it, yes.
Yeah. Good. You want to make that motion now?
You don't need a motion, do we?
You don't, you need a, need a motion.
Okay. Yes, we, we will pull this from the consent agenda.
I mean, this is, has to do with concept designs. And one of the concept designs I, I think we, I had talked with you about is putting on addition to that church, which I think would hurt the historic value.
Yeah. The, we want to back up just a little bit. That church, the cornerstone says 1888, but in fact, the evidence would indicate that that church was built in 1891. And it's really a very important historic building because of its simplicity. This was during the period of significance when everything was Victorian. This building is, was very plain in design and, and reflects the rather modest financial situation of the church members. So it in fact was built in stages. So the, the building itself was built and then added the bell tower. The bell tower was always planned. And then in the late 1920s, they added a pipe organ. And that pipe organ required a very modest bump out into the back of the building. Because that's almost 100 years old, that also becomes a, a significant historic element of the building. When you look at trying to put an addition on that building, it seems like the only reasonable place to do it is in the back. And then that would cover that significant element in itself. So whether it would be approved at HPC or, or not is not the issue for tonight. Also, because the HPC is advisory, but also it would have to be approved by the state historic preservation office. And there's a process for that. If we're going to spend money as a taxpayer, a significant amount of money, designing a use for this building that may result in not being able to be done, it seems like an advisory committee would make sense to see what is the best use, what is the best practice for this building, and then to come up with a very preliminary design, one that would focus, if there's going to be an addition, one that would focus on the addition portion, and get that into the process of review. My concern, not just from historic preservation, but as a taxpayer, we're going to spend all this money, which, which, since we don't have that detail, that would include design elements on the inside of the church, which the HPC is not concerned about, but in fact, could do all that effort for naught. So it seems like a more modest adventure. Let's take a look at what is planned on the outside. Let's go through that process before all the money is spent, all the time and energy is spent designing something that may not be appropriate for this particular property. So.
Thank you. Okay. Any, any other public comment on resolutions?
Jules Rouse, 1010 New York Avenue. I'd like to follow up what, what Warren had to say, but in a totally different direction. It has been the practice of this community that nonprofits bear their own expenses, that the city does not improve the properties for nonprofits. And that has been consistent, to my knowledge. And I, I think we're getting into a slippery slope area where we are acknowledging the potential for a new 501(c)(3) to come about, that is looking to the city to fund the improvements that they need for their function. I warn, I, I, I think it's something that the city should consider seriously before they, they make that step to look at supporting a single 501(c)(3). Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on resolutions? Okay, seeing none?
Counsel, is there anything else you'd like to remove from the consent agenda?
I would like 134, please.
I wasn't sure if that was put in or not. Oh, yeah, we have those separate, if that's okay. And 123, please.
Thank you.
We, we pulled 138, right? Yes, I had that pulled, absolutely.
Okay. Anything else?
Okay. So on the consent agenda this evening, we have Resolution 13105-2022, Resolution Authorizing the Submission of a Grant Application for a Community Capital Needs Grant from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. 13205-2022, Resolution Accepting the Federal Fiscal Year 2022 Cops &amp; Shops Grant. 13305-2022, Resolution Authorizing Assumption of Beach Concessions Agreement for Madison Cape May Re LLC and Parcel K. 13505-2022, Resolution Approving Updated Flood Insurance Promotion Activity with the Atlantic Cape Multi Jurisdictional Program for Public Information. 13605-2022, Resolution Authorizing Contract for Maintenance and Support of City Parking Kiosks to Amano McGann Inc. And 13705-2022, Resolution for the Payment of Bills.
I'll make a motion to approve those resolutions.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go back to 123-04-2022. This is a Resolution Authorizing a Professional Services Agreement to Polystyrene and Associates for Planning Services Related to Application for Municipal Plan Endorsement from the State of New Jersey Planning Commission, Office of Planning Advocacy. This was tabled from the last meeting, council.
This was tabled from the last meeting and we...
I would request that this be tabled again. I've had conversations with the planning department up at NJDEP. They are reviewing our previous plan and the, and going to go through and see which items we need to do and don't need to do. The proposal that we have in front of us is a full proposal for everything that may need to be done. So I am still awaiting their response. So I respectfully ask that this be tabled.
Might I recommend tabling indefinitely? I, I'm not sure when you're going to get your feedback.
Indefinitely, please.
I think indefinitely, yeah.
Do we have, do we have a motion on that to table indefinitely?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
13405-2022, Resolution Authorizing a Professional Services Agreement with Stockton University Coastal Research Center for Beach Face Slope Surveying.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you.
I have a question about this. Once we get this survey done, this is to be used to give to the Army Corps, Army Corps of Engineers and to say, you know, "We have a slope issue, a dangerous slope issue." Why would also we be doing this? I mean, I'm, I'm looking at you. You're, you're looking at me.
Yeah, I know, I am. I, because, yeah, you're thinking it might be a slope issue, but I don't know if you want me to start with it. Pretty much every...
I, I can, I can give a kind of an overview. There are, there are several positive aspects to continuing, to restarting this survey of, of the beach. One that is often missed is whenever we have a declared disaster, what they look to do is compare the post-storm slope to the template. And through these surveys, you're able to have a comparison of pre and post-storm slopes. It also will allow us to further analyze how things are moving when the Army Corps is not here. You know, it's, it's great that the Army Corps builds to a certain slope, but eventually they leave, the next storm comes, and we're in a different situation. So by having this annually surveyed, we'll be able to have a, a better understanding of what the movements are that occur when they're not here.
So we can't use this as a, as a platform or a, a piece of evidence to say that, you know, maybe the fan should be brought in a different way?
I, I believe all...
For public safety?
I believe that any data points that we can collect on the slope of the beach outside of just the Army Corps surveys are helpful in our, in our efforts to continue to improve the safety of our beaches.
I just want to comment, before there was four points or four areas that are done, now we're increasing it to 10, correct? Is, is the Army Corps paying for the other four and we're just paying for the additional six?
No, this isn't, this doesn't have to do with the Army Corps projects. This is separate from that.
Then who is paying for the four that are normally done every year?
Oh, you, oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood you. The Army Corps will still continue to do their surveys outside of these. These are additional surveys to be completed for the city of Cape May, in which we will own the data. We will be able to utilize it and we'll be able to, to adjust and have conversations with the Coastal Research Center as to how we're moving forward.
Are we getting, if the, if they're doing the four locations, are we doing the six locations at the same time so we can compare apples and apples and not doing them at, at different times? Because to me, the only reason why we should be putting them all together is to be done at the same time so we have a complete view and not...
A snapshot.
Yeah, not before a storm, after a storm. This is before, this, these points were after, but a complete overall picture.
Six added sites.
I'm talking, I'm, what I'm talking about is the last whereas on the first page.
Okay, on the first page?
Yeah, first page, at the very bottom says, "The state of New Jersey," which, I don't know who the state of New Jersey is. I, I thought it was the Army Corps, but I guess it's somebody else in the state of New Jersey.
Where, where are you?
The last whereas on the first page.
The state of New Jersey is, is one of the local sponsors of the beach replenishment projects through coastal engineering and NJDEP.
Okay, that's what I was assuming. My point is, then, they do it twice at the four locations. We're going to add on six locations. My concern is that we do them, that we're going to be doing them at different times. We should be doing them at the same time so that we can compare of, you know, the, the whole area at one time. Because if we do them at different times, it's not, we're not going to be able to, to include all the data.
Okay, it says, "All 10 locations will be combined for a two-day effort to collect the digital elevation data, take field notes, field photography," actually in the Stockton University Coastal Research Center's middle of that first paragraph.
Yeah, I would say that, that they are doing them all.
They're doing them all at the same time.
So then, that's my, my point is... So then, my point is, are we only paying for six because of the $23,000? Is that for the all 10 or just the six?
We're adding the six, and that's what this is for.
Okay, I'm just clarifying, I'm not...
They indicate that in their proposal, that the state annually funds the others. What we're trying to do is supplement and get better data, a more complete picture. I think I read the intent of that, that they wanted to have it all connect.
Right.
You know, they're trying to like volley off of what the state's already doing to get a bigger data set. So it would make sense that it would be consistent with when they're doing it. But they may have some reason for when and how they do it that...
Even in Dr. Farrell's proposal, it says, "Combining the NJDEP sites already in Cape May City with the six added sites to phrase some of the labor costs associated with the field work." So his intention is to be doing this work in conjunction with the DEP.
Okay, then my next question, which is off of Mr. Myers, is can we use the data that's collected for this that talks about the slope, relate it back to beach safety, and use that as a... Okay, if we can, are we going to? Because I think anybody that goes under the beach realizes that there are those shelves that occur that create a strong backwash in a danger zone.
Yeah, and like Mr. Belasco said, that all of that information will be utilized. You know, we'll get the data in and see where it is and see, you know...
I think it's also very important that this data to be used, if we want to do this on an annual basis or whatever amount of time we're going to do it, but it's important that the lifeguards are aware of what's underneath the surface, you know, the differences between the beaches, how the water, you know, how the sand comes in, just like you were saying with the other features of the water, such as undertow and things like that. I think it's important for us, even as residents, to know what the differences between the beaches when it comes to accessing water, whether you're younger or older, you know? And you can make a decision of which beach you want to visit.
Mr. Belasco, just one more addition to what you stated. If I'm not mistaken, if there is a state of emergency, then 75% of that, of replenishing or completing the, back to the original template, would be covered. Am I correct?
If we were to complete...
Because we have this in place.
Right, if we were to complete a replenishment outside of the Army Corps' schedule, then we would be able to utilize this in any FEMA reimbursements.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that as well, okay?
That's good.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, do we have a motion?
There is, mayor.
There was, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Next, we have 138-05-2022. Resolution authorizing a professional services contract to Mills &amp; Schnoring Architects LLC for preparation of a preservation plan and concept design study for Allen AME Church.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
I had pulled this because I was a little taken back because I had asked the theater company when they were here what they needed. And they talked about a balcony and raised seating inside. I specifically asked if they needed any additions, and they said no. And now I see this request to do, construct an addition to facilitate the theater operation and performances. And if I hadn't asked them twice before the meeting and during the meeting that they weren't going to do this addition, is why I'm a little upset here. Because the whole purpose and why I voted for buying the AME Church was to preserve it in the condition that it's in, in the sense that it's simple and it relates back to the reason why it was built at the time and that there isn't large, ornate structures associated with it. And I think when you start putting on additions, we're not doing, the reason why we purchased the church to begin with, was to preserve it as it is in that area for people to see what a church at that time was like. And that's why I'm against the fact that we're going to be paying for a planning of an addition and possibly the construction of an addition.
May I? I'm totally with you, Deputy Mayor. It's kind of defeats the purpose of having an addition. The purpose, I mean, the spirit of this resolution really is about having a preservation plan and concept design, which includes the bell tower. And that's, I'm 100% for. Once we do anything like that to the outside that's different than what already exists, we just wasted a bunch of money and destroyed the integrity of that building and its history. And I think Jules Rouse has a great point. You know, we're not buying this church and fixing it up to accommodate a nonprofit. We're buying it and fixing it up for the benefit of the future generations of our country, in our community. And, you know, I'm all for the Eastland Theater using this building, but as is, you know, as preserved the way we should, you know?
Okay, I'll say, this was never, in my opinion, intended for people to see what a church used to look like. I think what it's meant to be is a community center for people to be able to use. You know, historic preservation, which I'm a proud member of the Historic Preservation Commission for several years, then liaison on council, and have done a lot of preservation projects in town that I'm very proud of and care deeply about. The reason we bought this church right away when I was elected to office was, before we purchased it, it was being allowed to be neglected. There was no roof, the roof was leaking every time it rained majorly. And there was a thought that there was just going to be demolition through neglect, which is why we purchased that property right away when we first came into office. And we purchased it at a fair price, and we purchased it at a good price for our taxpayers. We immediately started going out for grants. We started working with grant writers and frankly received a $400,000 grant by the County Open Space Board, which covered like 95% of the first phase of this project, which starts in the next couple of weeks. And again, that phase is to shore this building up and make it a beautiful, beautiful building. But we can make a beautiful building that no one's going to go visit. It has to have a purpose. And people aren't going to go visit a church to see a church. It's just not going to happen. So what we did was we put, at the last meeting, we kept hearing, "Let's hire a, let's hire to make a preservation plan." And that's exactly what we're doing. We want to make a preservation plan. Anything that we do with this church through an architect, you have to have an architect, you have to hire an architect. And the best architects are ones that are going to get grant funding. We've already been in contact several times with the New Jersey Historic Trust. I've had multiple conversations with the New Jersey Historic Trust. They want to fund this church. They want to fund the project. But we have to have an architect to design. We have to have an architect to do the preservation plan. No one's doing this for free. I know it came, this gentleman came at the recommendation of our existing...
I can touch on that. Yeah, Arch, all of this proposal has precipitated upon the resignation of our original architect for personal reasons. And so it sent us in a search for a replacement architect. And, you know, in hearing some of the Eastland presentation the last week, it brings to mind the likeness of a church and a theater. And that's the main reason why I reached out to Eastland to see if they had suggestions of historical architects that were competent and expert in building, not just theaters, but museums, public buildings. And they said Mills Schnoring. And separately, I reached out to our preservationist that we already have under contract and has already started some pre-work on preparing the preservation plan and asked her if she had any recommendations. And she also had Mills Schnoring on her list. So we received this proposal and, you know, there's been a lot of talk under the concept design. You know, I haven't heard questions on the preservation plan, but on the concept design. And I would point out that the architectural portion of that concept design, we had a proposal from a local architect to only prepare plans for a bell tower. They were roughly 40% of this overall cost. So we are right in line and getting so much more from this proposal than we were getting from the other one that we had. And again, this concept design will be fully vetted. Construction is not going to occur off of these plans until it has reached the approval of the community. So, but we have to have something to talk about. We have to have something to look at. We have to have something to be able to show the people that we're asking for money. And that's what precipitated this proposal coming before you all tonight, is to keep this ball rolling, to keep this project moving. It's a split in half present proposal with the preservation plan, which is a must. We've already told the county that we're going to prepare a preservation plan. We've started, we've hired the other two legs of this three-legged stool for this preservation plan, and it just completes that trinity. So, yeah, that's the background story of where this proposal came from and why it came in the way it came in.
And if I can add, just, there aren't a lot of architects who do a preservation plan at the same time. So to have one person who's doing the preservation plan, who's doing the architectural work, all one person, we're not dealing with a bunch of different entities, is a major bonus to deal with one person to be able to do that. But also, as I stated, the best architects who are very familiar with historic preservation projects work with the New Jersey Historic Trust all the time. Their grants will actually cover soft costs. So soft costs would be under a preservation plan. They would be under architectural plans. So you could kind of go cheap and do it one way, and you might not get these grants. But if you get the best of the best, who can prepare a preservation plan, which is so important to this project and for the grant process, and who has extensive background in historic preservation and the architecture field, this gentleman has both qualifications, and that's the reason we're looking to hire him.
I want to make two comments. One is, Mr. Mayor, you commented that we didn't buy the church to preserve the church, we bought it to preserve the building. Then why did we pay all this money to have the stained glass windows redone? Why are we paying all this money to have the church steeple redone? If we weren't going to preserve it as a church?
It can't be a church.
If we weren't going to preserve it as a church, then we could have just put in regular windows and not redone the stained glass.
I would have never, no. I would have never done that, no, because those stained glass windows are beautiful and part of Cape May's history.
They're also part of the church, and that's preserving the church as a whole.
Deputy Mayor, I was involved in making sure that those windows were preserved, went up to the right person and came back. I love those windows.
Right, but what I'm saying, it's contradicting what you're saying was, we're just preserving it as a building. We're not, we're preserving it as a church. That's why we're doing the windows and the bell tower. And this preservation plan, I'm not against the preservation plan, I'm against the preservation plan putting on the addition to the church. And we had talked about what uses we were going to do with this church, and one of them was, which Cape May doesn't have, is a museum. Wildwood has a museum. There's a lot of people that would go on a daily basis, or whenever they come to visit Cape May, at least once in their visit, to a museum and see old photographs, old memorabilia, maybe even old films of, you know, floods or how the streets looked years ago and how they look now. So to say that there's no other uses for this building besides a theater company, that it could be used as a museum. And I'm not against this whole preservation plan. Matter of fact, at the last meeting, I was the one that said we have to make sure that we do the preservation plan. I'm just against us spending $92,000 and that includes, I'm sorry, $94,000, and that includes an addition, for us to put an addition.
Can I bring everybody up to speed a little bit? This is a... Can I speak?
Hold on a second. Counsel will open the floor when that's the time, but we can't have this back and forth right now.
I kind of want to bring it to people and to what's going on here. We have this resolution. Then we have the proposal by the company that wants to do this plan. This company, we'll call them MNSA, whatever it is, they asked, they reached out to Eastland Theater and said, "What are you guys thinking for this so we can keep this in our minds when we come up with this plan?" And what happened was, in this packet is the letter from the president of the Eastland Theater to this company. In their letter, they, one of the things they request, or, you know, it's part of their list of, you know, wants, is to have an addition. That doesn't necessarily put the city of Cape May in any corner to say that, you know, we're going to definitely pay for this addition, to design this addition. And to go along with what Mr. Belasco said, there's going to be a lot of public input with this. As part of this proposal, we have kickoff meetings, building surveys, base drawings, programming, code analysis, concept design, presentation renderings for fundraising, cost estimates, preservation plan, goes into detail with that, project schedule, et cetera. That's the main purpose of this ordinance. I think the public would agree with me that an addition to this building would be the wrong thing moving forward. But we need this. We need this for the grants. We need this to get approval from SHPO for various things. I'm all in support with this, except for that one part of the letter from the Eastland Theater requesting a bump on, which is not necessarily putting us in any corner or anything.
Exactly.
And they're two mutually exclusive things, between the use of the building and the preservation plan. So we're looking at this ordinance right now, which is a preservation plan.
And I thought that timing was also an issue here, that not, there were no other architects available to do this in a reasonable period of time?
But I don't think we're against the architect. I think it comes down to, the only reason for the addition would be that it becomes a theater.
I would just like to point out that $94,000 is not, like, the addition. It's...
Oh, no.
$28,190 is the architect's portion of the preservation plan, and then with some subcontractors comes to $37,690. The architect's portion of the concept design is $29,415. Now, the back-of-the-house addition, which, that's the only line where the word "addition" appears, is lumped in with "concept design for bell tower, back-of-the-house addition, interiors." I don't know if that means a physical addition onto the back of the building or addition of back-of-the-house type of operations in the interior of the building. Until we get an actual design and some concepts in front of us, we're really just speculating. So I think we need to move this from speculative to at least theoretical. And then, once we get to theoretical, we can have conversations as to whether we abide by this theory or that theory.
But who's driving this architect? Because that's what the question I caught.
The city of Cape May.
Is the fact that the letters coming from the theater company, looking like they're directing...
That was a mistake in communications. The city is the client. It's already been rectified, the conversation has been had. That's why the resolution is before city council tonight, because it is the city that will direct everything.
Right, because we're still going to need state...
SHPO.
SHPO.
Yes.
Approval.
Which we need these two things for.
Right, and along with Nancy, with her part of the project. Since a lot of these questions revolve around HPC, I would like to ask... to ask the HPC chair to come forward to answer some of our questions.
We, we have a process. Mr. Chairman spoke.
But I have some questions.
This is, this is to hire an architect and, and to do a preservation plan, to save the building. That's the goal, is to save the building. We, that, that building wasn't gonna be saved, okay? And now that's what we want to do. And we want to do it in the most economical way for our taxpayers and do it in a way that the church is gonna live on in perpetuity, well past us being on council.
So are you denying me to have the chair of the HPC come down and give us some direction?
He can speak at the time he just spoke.
But this will be after we vote on it. I just wanted to know if you're denying me to have him come down and ask some questions.
The procedure should be, does council want to hear from, does all of council, as a majority, want to hear from the chairman? Out of order, he's entitled to speak during public comment. That's, that's the process. So somebody can make a motion.
And all of this would go before HPC. I'd frankly want HPC members to be part of this process, a hundred percent, as, as I've done as mayor throughout every project that we've done. And, and would insist on personally, not, not due to any code or any law, I insist on that.
I would like to hear from the HPC chair on how, um, SHPO is involved in all this and the costs associated with having a full-scale architect design versus a sketch and what the cost difference would be, and how that relates to having SHPO approval and also the funds associated with getting it from the state, with preserving this. I make a motion that we, we have him come down and answer a few questions.
Let me just say this. Mr. Copeland, who I would have any conversation with at any moment, is happy to come to the microphone. But questioning him on expenses of, uh, of renderings versus architectural plans and all of that, frankly, is outside of the purview of what we're doing here. But that's where we want to go.
Well, I make, I made, there's a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Ready for roll call? Can I just say that it's, it stays within the scope of this? Just, just what we're looking at as far as this plan, yeah.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland, if you'd like to come to the podium.
You've been summoned.
Officially summoned to the podium.
Thank you.
So, um, where do we start here, since it was, it was limited? There's, there's a couple of things I would like to share with the group, but it might be in the public segment. So how, how do we want to deal with this? I'm comfortable standing here and beginning, um, from, from the beginning. Just so city council knows and, and the public knows, the AME Church, I had met with after the fire extensively. I was able, um, to review their insurance policy, their insurance coverage, and I was able to get them an additional fifty thousand dollars from the insurance company for the I negotiated the price, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I didn't negotiate it for the city. I negotiated a price. It was clear they couldn't afford to fix the building, even with the additional money from the insurance company. We got into a conversation about, um, what their options were, and I made an offer of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, Mr. Copeland.
Well, it's
I, I understand, and frankly, I appreciate
I'll get to the point.
I do appreciate it. I mean, I, I hope you know that, but
The point was, part of that negotiation was that they wanted, and it's in the sales agreement, that the AME Church wanted to be recognized in the facility as part of a museum. Now, the museum is not discussed, but in fact, it's part of the sales agreement that it would be evident that it was an AME church. I could've, I could've purchased that myself. It included the property next door. I could've sold that property next door for significantly more than the three fifty. I could've donated the church to the city and taken a tax deduction, which is significant. But instead, I brought it to the city. I brought it to the city with the idea that this is a good idea. I talked about a museum. I thought it would be better purchased by the city rather than an individual and then, and then do it. I also offered to help with the general contracting, which is where the windows come from. I, I don't want to continue to belabor this, but the, the idea was introduced by the church, it was introduced by me, to the mayor, that this would make a perfect museum. We're a national historic landmark. We don't have a museum. Wildwood has a museum. But that would allow it to be used also by the public. During this process, there's some confusion about preservation plan. Preservation plan, uh, is way behind, probably over a year past, and, um, an architect and a historian. It was a comment that it's one organization that's doing that. It is not. It's two organizations. We have the contract that's talked about now, and we have the historian that is talked about. We're talking about this source for this architect. In fact, during this process, they engaged, they're the ones that found it, they're the ones that engaged them, and they've been doing the work. So I think there's a lot of misinformation here. It's, I don't want to be argumentative, but the facts are facts. We should have a steering committee take a look at this. We have a steering committee for the firehouse. We have a steering committee for the police station. We have steering committee for this, steering committee for that. But here we're going to take an important historic church, and we're gonna do it without a steering committee, without any input, without any expertise either.
That's just not true, Mr. Warren, Mr. Mr. Copeland.
Was there a committee? Did I miss a committee?
No, but you heard the presentation here to the public last week. That was a public presentation of what they'd like. They'd like to bring a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. They'd like to take on the work of maintaining the property.
How do we know that that's the best use for the property? Who determined that a church, that the theater is the best source?
Their, their presentation was, that was their presentation to this
Was there, was there an advisory committee and I missed it? Who determined that the best use for the church?
It was to this committee here.
Right, but we can vote on
I'm sorry, I'm speaking. It hasn't, we have not voted. No, we have not voted. But what we're trying to do tonight is hire an architect, okay, to, to, to do the project. That's what we're trying to do.
This was an architect that was initially hired by the theater group.
No, no.
And it's only being considered as a theater, that's
It's not true, Mr. Copeland. It's not true.
They were hired by the theater company, cause here's a letter from, from the architect to, it's, it's in our packet.
We put it in your packet so you could see it.
Right. So I, she even said at the last, at the meeting that they had hired
That's been stated multiple times. We, we, we have someone who's willing to use the space, give the, give the city a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for that, not use it during the daytime, so that if we wanted to use a museum during the daytime, it could be, okay? So you have a museum during the daytime, which is when people go to museums, and you have a theater at night, you have a community center, people can use it as a community center. You know, what we're trying to do here is hire an architect to try to save this building, Mr. Copeland. That's what we're trying to do. And there will be multiple uses to this church.
I, I haven't seen that. We should look at the contract. It should be exposed.
I have it right here, Mr. Copeland. And, and I, I can explain, I wrote the contract. And I have, I have, well, let, let me answer that, because I'm, I'm having a hard time listening to, the conditions are not in the contract. I, I take seriously and appreciate, as a citizen, the origin story of how this came to be. But the contract with that, the AME Church signed and that the city signed, and by the way, was attached to an ordinance that was first reading, second, second reading, published in the paper, published upstairs, talked about ad nauseam at this table last year. Simply says that the city agrees that for its part, the city will continue to refer to and identify the property as the site of the Allen AME Church. And I can tell all of council and the public that that, that, that language was communicated to me directly by the church. It's bold included in that document, because that's what they wanted. So that's, to me, the only condition that is really attached to the city. The decision of how you utilize that property for public purposes is up to this council. And then once, once it's given away and once the city enters into a contract with the property owner, it's, it's up to the five of them to determine what is the best, highest and best use of that.
I was just asking how the decision was made.
It's, it's not been made. This, this, this preservation plan, the city needs a preservation plan. If the city hires this architect, the city's the client. So the city's driving the bus, just like they were before.
It's, it's, it's the bus that is the concern. My only comment was, we're spending all this money and it includes an addition. I originally said, we should do something significantly less and get it through the process. The, the state is not going to be overly concerned with the architectural features on the inside. The HPC is not concerned at all. And why then can't we take a look at it now and spend significantly less? Ninety thousand dollars here, twenty-six thousand dollars there? Now, with regard to the preservation plan, just so everyone knows, this preservation plan was due over a year ago. There is no urgency. We can take a month and, and go through a, a process that has been used throughout the city and determine the one best use, and then what exactly to ask an architect to do.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Um, I make a motion that we remove
Do we have, oh.
Do we have a motion?
City clerk isn't here.
We do have a motion in a second, Mayor.
Again, this will all go before the public. It will go before the Historic Preservation Commission. It will have to go before SHPO, that's the state Historic Preservation Office. They will be involved throughout the entire entirety of the project. The goal here is to preserve a building and get as many grants as we possibly can and, and have a partner that is going to run it. Um, I think the city running a museum is a nice thought. I think it will be difficult for the city to run a museum, personally. Uh, I think it should certainly be part of the AME Church, um, a, a tribute to our national historic landmark status as a major portion of that church, I think would be an excellent idea and would be happy to work with anyone. But we have a motion in a second, clerk.
What's that? I'm sorry, the motion in a second is to approve this?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
Next we have Resolution 139-05, 2022, Resolution authorizing settlement of dispute between the city of Cape May and the lower township municipal utilities authority.
I make a motion to approve that resolution.
Do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
This is, this is for the beach committee member, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on.
This is not beach safety. This is, I'm sorry, this is the settlement between us and
Yeah, a little different. Sorry.
Right. I just wanted to, um, my question has to do around, there is no authorization from the city man, uh, city CFO saying where the funds are coming from. Um, I think, I just want to make a motion that we put in, we amended to include his approval and where the funds should be coming from. Is it 2020 or 2021, or is it 2021 and 2022?
I can, I can kind of help phrase that if, if that's helpful. Usually every resolution I send involves spending money. I put the treasurer's certification in this, in this case, we were discussing this in closed session. Council can make a motion. I would suggest council makes a motion to adopt subject to the CFO completing the treasurer's certification. That's typically included on our resolutions. And I'll note for the record that the, um, CFO indicated that the funds can come from either the 2021 or 2022 water sewer utility, um, other. And you may include with that manager's discretion which one?
Would you like, is that how you want to phrase your motion?
Yes. I just, we have to decide if it's 2021 or 2022.
Or you can leave that to the manager and CFO's discretion, that the money's available.
I think the, the point, cause I had asked this question to the city manager, um, on Monday and then again on today about this. And I think their response at the closed session had to do with, Neil said, it's up to council to decide.
He said, we have the money, we could do it either way. The money's there.
Matt, 2021's older, if you want to do 2021.
Yeah, 2021.
Plus inflation since then. No, I'm kidding. Yeah, does it matter?
No.
Okay, then we'll do 2021.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
21.
So the, uh, you make that
The CFO treasury certification from the water and sewer for 2021.
Yep.
Do you want a second?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion to amend?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Which one am I?
We're excited.
Still yes.
Okay.
Do I have a motion on the amended?
To adopt as amended.
Second.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
And lastly, we have Resolution 140-05, 2022, a resolution for appointment of a member to the Beach Safety Advisory Committee of the city of Cape May.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
Any old business counsel?
Any old business counsel?
Um, I, the only old business I have is, is Livestream working yet?
It is not. It is being worked on.
Okay, so we still don't have Livestream working yet?
Oh, Livestream is working right now.
I don't mean
As far as access to the older videos, that is still something that we're working out with former Livestream Vimeo.
This has been going on for a few months now and no one can access anything, I think, before this December?
Correct. Before the switch from, um, Vimeo to our current platform. And this was one of the reasons why that switch was so imperative. The old Livestream company is out of business. So we're struggling in, in getting ahold of anybody there to answer our questions. And, um, we've been working diligently to get that resurrected and, and just get possession of the videos again. But this was why we had to switch quickly.
Right. Cause I think the more time that we let it lapse here, there might be some concern that we don't get to get those archived. And that's only, that's less than six months ago, that we don't have access to.
Yeah. We're diligently working on that.
And then my other question for old business has to do with, how are we doing with the Welcome Center paving?
Can I make a suggestion? I mean, answer that, obviously, but I think we should have the, uh, city engineer at the next council meeting to give some updates on everything.
I thought this is more of a legal issue.
It is, it is, good. But I think just in general, I, we'd like to have him on the agenda for the next meeting. Uh, go ahead.
And just answer that status wise, the NJ DOT came back with additional comments. Our city engineer is currently working through those comments and looking to incorporate them, get them back to NJ Transit and NJ DOT to hopefully cement a final plan them, get them back to NJ Transit and NJDOT to hopefully cement a final plan, no pun intended.
Is there...
Is there a timeframe on that?
Is the problem associated with McCurry?
No, thanks God.
Okay, okay.
No, 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 no. Actually, no.
That's all I wanted to know. If we were going around again, back into the same...
No, we're not going around and round on that. The issue is purely between NJDOT and the city right now, problem solving, some concept planned items.
Okay.
But we had to have that in writing from the owner to move on with the DOT.
Right.
Okay. Any other old business? Okay. New business? We have city solicitor, any new business?
I don't have anything to add, Mayor, thank you.
City manager?
No, sir.
City clerk?
No, sir.
Did you say no? I'm sorry.
No, I'm good, thank you. I'm sorry, no, I'm good, thank you.
Councilwoman Baldwin?
Just a reminder, for everybody, Jazz Fest is next weekend. And this probably should have been an old business. I believe the promenade, the paving is going to be done within the next couple of weeks. So...
We hope so.
Okay. Mr. Meyer?
I have nothing to add.
Councilman Meyer? Councilman, Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
None.
None?
Nothing.
Councilman Yeager?
Nothing.
I'll join the club. Have a wonderful evening, everyone, thank you.
Open public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Close. Public portion, Mayor?
I was really trying to push that. No, I apologize. Any public comment?
Excuse me.
Seeing none, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Time is nine oh seven.